Good evening and welcome. My name is Paul Alpert and I am the Chair of the Needham Planning Board. This is an open meeting of the Needham Planning Board. Today is Tuesday, April 5th. And on 2022, and it is presently 7:20 PM. This open meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Please. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting will not have public commenting, except in connection with any hearing that is on the agenda. There were two meetings, there are two hearings that are on the agenda tonight. One of which is not going to be proceeding and will be renoticed to a later date. That is with regard to a permit for outdoor seating at the James Restaurant. But there is a public hearing tonight, a continued public hearing for Carbon Health Medical Facility at the Needham Gateway on Highland Avenue and Second Avenue. For which, because it is a continuation of a public meeting, it will be available for for public comment. First, we will confirm that there's a quorum of the members of the planning board present. When I call your name, please respond that you're present, and then I will introduce our planning department staff. Marty Jacobs.
Present.
Natasha Espada.
Present.
Jean McKnight.
Present.
Adam Block.
Present.
And I'm present, so all five of us are here. And our planning department, our planning director Lee Newman.
Present.
And our assistant planning director Alexandra Clea.
Present.
Thank you. As each agenda item is reached, I will introduce participants. We're here to present or discuss projects and proposals. For those participating in the meeting, please also be aware that others may be able to see you and hear you. Anything you share or state will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www needhamma.gov unless otherwise noted. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. Each of the speakers on our agenda will be introduced. After speakers conclude their remarks, each board member will be asked by name for any comment, questions, or motions. All votes will be by roll call. For each participant, please remember to state your name for the record before speaking. And for each person from the public who was recognized to speak, please remember to state your name and address for the record before speaking. That concludes our remarks, our opening remarks. So we can get to our agenda. It is 7:24. So before we get to item number one on our agenda, I'm going to call to order the public hearing that's scheduled for 7:20, which was an amendment to a major site plan, major project site plan special permit number 91-7. Rehospitality, Inc., doing business as the James is the petitioner regarding request to permit up to 69 outdoor seats on five onsite parking spaces. Before we proceed with the next item, we do have a published notice. Do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the notice? No, Adam, I saw your mouth move, but you were.
So moved.
Thank you. Moved in second, and is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll take the the role. Marty Jacobs.
Let me just ask you a quick question. We're voting on public reading of the public notice on the James.
Right, right? Yes. It was in our packets.
Is that the only
Okay, breaking up.
I vote yes.
Thank you. Natasha.
Yes. I just have a question also, though. I thought you said that we weren't talking about the James, that it was.
Right, but 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 before we can open the public meeting to then vote on continuing it.
Okay.
We legally would have to read the public notice.
Okay. Yeah.
Jean McKnight.
Hi.
Adam Block.
Hi.
Thank you, and the Chair votes aye, so that's unanimous. Now, we have a request.
Mr. Chair, this is really not going to be a continuation because this was not properly noticed. So we're going to actually have to renotice this application. The petitioner was required to send notices out to parties and interests, and that did not happen. So we're going to be renoticing this hearing actually for May the 3rd.
So we're not going to have a motion to continue. What kind of
My motion. I withdraw my motion.
What was your motion?
Waive the reading of the public notice.
Well, but we still had a public notice that was published, and so.
There's no harm.
I didn't want to read it. I didn't want to take the time to read it to make sure that we were complying with the law.
That's right. We already voted.
We voted to waive the reading of the notice, but now we have to. So this was not publicly noticed, and therefore this matter is being postponed indefinitely. So I guess I have a motion to continue this matter indefinitely.
Do I have a motion? Yeah, I'll 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 move that if we need it.
I think we do. Thank you. Go ahead, second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Let's take the vote. Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Natasha Espada.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Let me share votes aye. So we dispense with this matter until it is properly noticed. Our next hearing isn't scheduled until 7:45, so we've got some time. Let's take on the A&R Plan for Property located at 18 and 62 Brookside Road, Needham, Massachusetts. Let's see, is there anybody here in attendance? For this matter. Yes, David Himmelberger is here. He has his hand raised. So, yes.
I noticed that the actual application has an address of 62 Brookside Road in Wellesley.
Yeah. Brookside Road crosses the Needham-Wellesley line in this property. One of these properties, actually, I believe, does cross the line.
I'm
62
I have
the post office address. Mr. Himmelberger, is there anybody else that will be joining us? Oh, I see John Glossa and Gordon Russell have come.
Correct.
Ross.
And that is a mailing address.
The mailing addresses in Wellesley.
Correct.
And I have a question, Mr. Chair. Are you the materials that have come to us? And I did not see a revised A&R Plan that Westell have been submitted to us.
Well, it was in our package. It was on it was on the package that was on the website.
It was on the package that Alex distributed?
It was on the package that was on the website. It wasn't mailed to us.
Well, I linked to the packet that Alex sent. I linked to the package and did not find it.
It's paged for.
All right, well, I don't want to
It might make sense for the applicant to share their
Will it be put up on the screen?
Okay, so so I'm going to recognize the attorney for the petitioners, or the petitioner, Attorney David Himmelberger, and Mr. Himmelberger, if you would introduce the other people who are with you, I would appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, David Himmelberger from Wilder Shea and Himmelberger LLP at One Hollis Street in Wellesley, Massachusetts. Also here tonight, the record applicant, representing the record applicant Gordon Russell, and the survey engineer John Glossa.
Thank you. Good to see you folks.
Hello, Attorney Himmelberger. You may remember me, Jean McKnight, from your work for our Quaker meeting on a title issue. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Do we have a conflict of interest here, Jean?
That was several years ago now.
Okay. Mr. Himmelberger, you have the floor if you would like to describe what you're what you have in front of us. I'd appreciate it.
Sure, so a A&R Plan was submitted for the land on Brookside Road to create new lots one and two. Each of those two lots has the required 150 feet of frontage required in the single residence A District. We believe that under the statute that both parcels qualify for your endorsement of approval not required under the subdivision law and would so request.
Okay. Ms. Newman, do you have any comments on this before we proceed?
Oh, I think I had asked that two of our standard notes be added to the plan. One was a build factor calculation for each of the lots as well as an upland calculation for each of the lots. I mean, it's our standard procedure, and we normally get it on A&R Plans. In this instance, the applicant has declined to provide that. And I have consulted with Town Council who has advised me that we can't statutorily require it, although we can ask.
Thank you. I just have a question. I reviewed this and and it appears to me that it qualifies for an A&R. I just have a question out of curiosity as to why you have a separate lot three, which doesn't have any frontage and is unbuildable. I'm just curious as to why you didn't combine those with lots one and two. I've had this, we've we've had this before, and and I know that it's legally permissible. It's just I'm just, you know, intellectual curiosity as to why that was done.
Certainly, so a fair question. It wasn't required for the lots. And it may, in the future, at some other future time, become associated with other lots that have requisite frontage.
Let me run by the members of the board and see if anybody has any questions or comments. Marty Jacobs.
I do not. Thank you.
Jean McKnight.
Um, yeah, I find that when I read the email that David Himmelberger sent to Lee Newman on March 28th, I misread it at first to mean that he would be sending a revised plan that did have the corrected build factor and upland calculations. But now I see we'll submit one without the build factor and upland calculations, without those factors at all. And Lee Newman, would you would you comment on the failure to have that data?
I was advised by Town Council that I could not require it on the A&R, even though we traditionally get it. I think we wanted it, I wanted it, we wanted it disclosed. Because I I think that maybe one of the lots won't meet the build factor and won't meet the upland calculation. So it's kind of preceding as a nonconforming lot. And we wanted, I wanted to have that called out on the public record, but that's not being disclosed on this plan. And I was advised that we can't require it. The only thing we're looking at here is the frontage of the lots, and whether it's adequate or not. And we do have a note on it that indicates we're not making a determination as to compliance with zoning.
Well, you've placed it on the public record right now. So Attorney Himmelberger is on notice, but that's that may be the case.
Well. I thought our approach of calling out the build factor and whatever upland calculation, if that was also required. And then acknowledging that as a prior nonconforming lot, it was not had a status of a prior nonconforming lot would have satisfied any buyer and satisfied our wish to make sure that the record is clear on points like that.
Well.
But apparently that concept has been rejected, and I don't want to spend any further time on this.
Well, I'll make a further comment on it, Jean. Because I did do a little bit of research on it. And I spoke to, I spoke to our Town Council, Chris Heap, who can what what I found was something called called the A&R Handbook, which is published, which was published by the Governor's Office when when Governor Patrick was in office in 1990, originally in 1997. It was revised in 2010. And it points out that that an A&R Plan, and Chris Heap confirmed this, is is not indicative that the lots meet zoning. It's just indicative that they have the requisite frontage. That's what the statute provides. You could have an A&R Plan that doesn't have sufficient square footage for the zoning district that it's in. And it's not required that it be put on there, and it's 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 kind of a buyer beware as to the zoning issues. The A&R Handbook does make a comment. Chapter 41, Section 8P, which is the A&R Statute, for the Mass General Law states, "The endorsement under this section may include a statement of the reason approval is not required. Court cases have supported the concept that where a planning board knows its endorsement may tend to mislead buyers of lots shown on a plan. The planning board may exercise its powers in a way that protects persons who will rely on the A&R endorsement, citing Perry v. Planning Board of Nantucket, 1983 Appeals Court Case." And they make the record, the A&R Handbook states, "We would suggest that planning boards consider the following type of statement." And they give three suggestions, three alternative suggestions. One, the above endorsement is not determination of conformance with zoning regulations. Or two, no determination of compliance with zoning requirements has been made or intended. Or three, planning board endorsement under the subdivision control law should not be construed as either an endorsement or an approval of zoning lot area requirements, which, you know, these particular lots do it do have sufficient area requirements. I was thinking about raising this and suggesting that we include that language in the plan. But after speaking with Mr. Heap about the fact that, you know, the law is the law, and it's we're kind of a buyer beware state, I wasn't going to raise this, but where you raised the issue, I decided to read the the comment from the A&R Handbook, and if somebody else on the board wishes to consider requesting that we put one of those notations on the plan, we can discuss that.
I think we do.
I don't feel it's necessary.
I I I think we have it. Yeah, if you look at the endorsement section, underneath the endorsement section, we would, where we would actually sign it. It says, "Planning Board Endorsement is not a determination as to conformance with zoning regulations."
You're right. I didn't see it. You're right. Thank you. Thank you, Marty. It's there. Thank you for including that, Mr. Himmelberger. So I believe I've recognized Marty Jacobs and Jean McKnight. Adam Block, do you have any questions or comments? You're on mute, Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did, but they momentarily have been asked and answered.
Okay, Natasha Espada, you have any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Then do I have a motion?
I move that we endorse the the A&R Plan for the property located at 18 and 62 Brookside Road in Needham as subdivision approval not required.
A second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Natasha Espada.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. You've got it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Thank you all for coming. Just been seeing you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Okay, it is 7:40. We have five minutes. Maybe.
Maybe it's too early to take a five minute break.
Maybe we can handle item number three within in five or 10 minutes of the minimalist change.
Delivery.
Located at 952 Great Plain Avenue.
Yeah.
Regarding a request to allow deliveries to be made from the public way.
Apirak, if you're here, would you raise your hand? I don't see anything that says your name, but you might be under a nickname. Uh huh. Thank you.
Is somebody joining us?
Yes. Welcome. Please unmute yourself and state your name for the record. If you can turn on the video, it would be appreciated, but if you don't have video, that's okay, too. And you unmute yourself. Ah, there we go.
Okay. So everybody see me?
No, we cannot see you. All we have is an M on the on a blank screen.
Okay.
There we go.
So my name is Apirak. I'm from PM Sorry, the Little Spoon. 5952 Great Plain Avenue.
Hey, and this is a request for a de minimis change to allow deliveries to be made from the from from the street from Great Plain Avenue.
Yeah, from from the state, yes.
Also from Denham Avenue, I guess.
Yeah, from Denham Avenue, yes.
Yep, and this this is this is an offshoot from our allowing outdoor seating at the at the Latina.
Yeah, at the Latina, yes.
Took away the alleyway from which delivery trucks were accessing the rear the the rear door for deliveries for Little Spoon.
Right, right.
Since delivery trucks no longer have that access, they, we need to allow an amendment to the to the special permit for Little Spoon to allow to allow deliveries to be made from the street because we presently require that deliveries be made from the rear.
Yes.
So I think I think there's the the explanation of what we're doing. I have no comments or questions. Jean McKnight, do you have any comments or questions?
I do not.
Natasha Espada, do you have any comments or questions?
I do not.
Thank you. Marty Jacobs.
I do not.
And Adam Block.
No, I do not.
Okay, so first, we need a motion to treat this as a de minimis change.
I move second.
Moved in second. Did any discussion? I'll call the roll. Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Natasha Espada.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Adam Blocks.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's unanimous to allow this as a de minimis change. And now I need a motion to allow the requested relief.
So.
Thank you very much.
I have a motion for Marty Jacobs, so I have a second.
Second.
Adam Block seconds. Any discussion? Call the roll. Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Natasha Espada.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. Congratulations, you've got it. We will be be reviewing the decision and signing it due course.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
And I'll be in touch with you about next steps. Thank you, Apirak.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, will we be reviewing the decision at this meeting?
We will. I believe I believe that the decision is in our package. Do you want to? It's only 9:46 for our 9:45 hearing. Do you want to review it now?
Why don't we? Yeah, very simple.
I didn't, I didn't have any changes to it, as I recall. Did anybody have any issues with the draft decision?
No, no.
Then do I have a motion to accept a decision as as drafted?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Did any discussion? I'll call the roll. Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Natasha Espada.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. It's unanimous. And it's and it's still 7:46, so we're actually calling a hearing on time. Our 7:45 hearing. Amendment to Project Site Plan Special Permit Number 2005-07, Carbon Health Medical Group of Florida, with regard to property located at 121 Highland Avenue, Needham, the Gateway Plaza. Request for a new principal use described as a medical professional office, providing primary and walk-in medical care. And we have coming aboard for the petitioners, we have Attorney Rick Mann. We have property owner Mike Moskowitz. And we have Wayne Kiefner from the BSC Group. Welcome. Mr. Man, you have the floor.
Thank you. As you indicated earlier, this is a continuation of a hearing that was held on March 15. I believe it's fair to say that 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 hearing, we reviewed all of the definitional issues that were of relevance to the proposed use. Pardon me, but due to the constraints of time, we did not get into the parking waiver issue. And so this evening, we wish to continue on that vein. And Wayne Kiefner, who has been patiently awaiting his speaking role for quite some time now, is is here, is here with us. And hopefully you will indulge, Mr. Chair, my turning this over to him so that he can provide you with his updated evaluation results. There is in your packet, or should be, an updated and revised parking evaluation dated March 24, 2022, that Mr. Kiefner prepared relative to some of the factual assumptions that changed since the original issuance of his November 2021 report. And he has prepared a brief presentation relative to the parking waiver issue. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Kiefner.
Very good. Mr. Kiefner, you're up. Let me say that you're on mute. You're off mute. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. My name is Wayne Kiefner. I'm with the BSC Group. I'm traffic engineer there. Our office is at 803 Summer Street in Boston. And let me share.
Mr. Kiefner, I'm not hearing you very well. I don't know. She could speak a little louder or closer to your mic.
Hang on one second. Let me see if I can turn that up. Let me see. How about that? Is that any better?
You're in better.
A little. Let's try it.
How about now?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So let me share this screen. Okay, can y'all see a little PowerPoint here?
Yep.
So this is just a very brief PowerPoint that walks you through the process of the evaluation that we did. So we performed a parking evaluation of the of the proposed change in uses for the properties at 121 Highland Avenue. It was a four step process. If I go too fast, I tend to speak very quickly. So if I go too fast, just please ask me to to slow down. The first step was a 48 hour ATR counts at each driveway. ATR means it stands for automatic traffic recorder. Those used to be known as tubes, but now they're really cameras. But so 48 hour counts at each driveway. Those used to be known as tubes, but now they're really cameras. But so 48 hour accounts at each driveway. We then did parking occupancy observations on the site. We then did a parking demand estimates related to the change in uses. And finally, an analysis of the impacts of the change in uses. So this is just an updated site plan showing the the planned uses as of now. Panera Bread is is staying, Geico is staying, Carbon Health has taken the the space that was formerly Supercuts as well as as Hammer. And then the FW Web is shown as available for lease here, meaning not occupied. So the 48 hour traffic, 48 hour ATR counts were conducted over Friday and the Saturday in October 2021. The Friday showed a weekday peak around noon with minor peaks around 8:00 AM and also at 6:00 PM. Approximately 1,100 vehicles entered and exited, 71% of them came from Second Avenue, while 29% came from Highland Avenue. On Saturday, the weekend, there's one weekend peak, and it was around noon. Volume on Saturday was last about 764, 765, but the percentages were roughly the same, 72% from Second and 28% from Highland Avenue. The next step was parking occupancy observations where we where we did count during the day of occupied parking spaces. The site currently has 97 parking spaces, of which one would be utilized for for dumpster crawl, so at least 96. On Friday, we found the maximum occupancy occurred at 145 with 78 parked vehicles, which left 18 spaces open. Saturday had a maximum time of around 1:30 with 61 parked vehicles, leaving a minimum of 35 spaces open. We then we, at the same time, we conducted customer counts to Omaha Steaks and Frank Webb from the parking area so that we could subtract those out of of the uses as they're one of the changing uses. The next step was to determine parking demands based on IT parking generation manual. We use land use code 630, which is clinic. There are two criteria listed for land use six land use code 630. One is basing it on square footage and the other is per employee. We chose to use the gross square footage as it's more conservative than the per employee number. Based on this criteria, the peak parking demand is expected to be 16 vehicles, which should occur between 10 and 11:45 in the morning. Our next step was to analyze the impacts. So the customer counts from the uses to be removed, as you Omaha Steak and Frank Webb, were subtracted from the observed parking occupancy to calculate the parking demand without those uses. We then added in the parking demand for carbon health. And with that, the peak future parking demand on weekdays is expected to be 89, while the peak demand on the weekend is expected to be 71. These are just a couple charts that show it. The red line at the very top is is the parking supply. The blue line is the occupied spaces with the existing uses. The green line at the bottom is a change in parking demand, and then the purple line is the total future parking demand. And again, on the weekday, that we expect that to be 89, on the weekend, 71.
Excuse me, but I'm a little confused.
Sure.
That you took out FW Web. And you took out Omaha Steaks, but Omaha Steaks is where the clinic is going, where medical offices are going. So with 89, with peak demand of 89 spaces out of 96 spaces available, is that assuming that FW Web is vacant?
Yes.
So that only leaves seven spaces for the tenant at FW Web at the peak hour, if I'm hearing you correctly.
Yes, at this peak hour, right? And so the previous use that was going to be there, ExGulf, had shifted peaks and and in so their their peak use time wasn't the same as as around noonish time.
Right.
So the the peaks were shifted. So you're correct. If they're at this peak, there's there'll only be those seven spaces available.
So if so if this use comes in, when we then have an application for the FW Web space, we have to take this into consideration. And if their peak hour is going to be the same as we have here, they may they may have a problem getting their permit.
Well, Mr. Chair, we understand that, and we're prepared, obviously, when we do find out who that tenant will be. We will be back with a an updated evaluation.
Mr. Chair, can I can I ask a question?
Sure.
Did you take?
Let me let me just ask Mr. Kiefner whether he's willing to have us ask questions now, or or if you'd rather that we wait until you finish your presentation.
Either is fine. I literally have two slides left, but either is fine.
Okay, then there's a spot.
Thank you. Just a really quick thing. You said you took this in October of 2021, but that's, you know, it's been the traffic has been different since COVID. So do you put any kind of percentage to to these numbers to account for the fact that the traffic is not at the same level as it would be, it would have been two years ago, or it might be next year?
So we have, we have not. The short answer is we did not. But we have this discussion internally in our office all the time because what you're saying is 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 true in in one respect, in that there's there seems to be a lot less folks in offices these days, right? Because a lot of people are 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 doing the hybrid thing. But as a commuter from Walton to Boston every day, I I can tell you traffic is where it's always been. Trust, I don't know how, but it is. And I I think it's because even though there may be less people in the office, there's a lot less people using mass transit, and I think all that traffic has shifted to roadways.
So do you think that you that for parking service, because there are more people on the road that you would need to add, take that factor into account?
I don't I don't think so. I mean, October of 2021 seems a long time ago, but I I want to say we've this was first submitted and and maybe Rick could, if I can tell you. So I think we first submitted this in November. So it was very timely when we submitted it. It's just been we've been you know, things get continued and and things carry on, so.
Okay, thank you.
It was also well after the peak of COVID.
Right, but 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 we're in a situation where things are undefined, so just taking into account that things will continue to change. I just wanted to know where the standards were for that and.
There there isn't good. I should say it like this, a a year or two ago, there's good direction from the state and from IT and and various other bodies of how to of how to deal with that with counts. And a lot of times what we did was use old counts from the before days and and just bring them up to current days. But there, as of right now, there are no guidelines that I know of of increasing counts because of that.
Okay.
It was, and then it then it kind of went away.
Were there counts that were taken before the pandemic that you can compare it to?
Not not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Kiefer.
Are we asking questions now? Is it okay?
It's fine with me. I can get to two more slides if you like, and then and then I can flip back to any slide you need.
Well, if there are only two more slides, why don't why don't we have Mr. Kiefner finish his presentation?
And then. So this was the the weekday, the very similar similar slide for the weekend. And then just the conclusion slide is that the existing 96 spaces can accommodate the expected future peak of 89 on weekdays and 71 on weekends.
Okay.
I had a feeling that was.
Okay, Adam, you had your hand up.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a a number of questions about traffic parking. And then to speak to Rick Mann's point earlier, I do have some questions about the definition of some of the matters in front of us that I want to return to, but for now, we'll stick to parking and traffic. Mr. Kiefner, when when you mentioned in response to Natasha's question about making an adjustment for COVID, you mentioned you referred, I think, to the state had guidance. And you said that that guidance went away. What do you mean by it went away?
Sure. So the the guidance that was provided by the state was was for a year or two ago. I don't think that is still being considered right now. That's my understanding. I can check the dates, but there's, as as far as I know, there are no adjustments to traffic counts that we're doing today. Two years ago, there were, and a year ago, there there was, but not today.
So are you saying that the the guidance from the state on how to handle traffic from certain traffic counts adjusted for the pandemic is no longer valid as of a certain date?
That's my understanding.
And what is that date in which that's no longer valid?
I don't I don't have that date in front of me. I can find it if it's if I can find it if you like.
It would it would be helpful. I like Natasha, I do think that having a sense of of the adjustment using that same formula that the state guidelines had recommended and to apply that consistently during the pandemic for various developments, I think, is the appropriate methodology. And I and I would like to see a revision to the parking calculation and to the traffic calculation as a result of that methodology, unless there was a specific date and a reason why this state had expired its own guidance.
Maybe I can just clarify just one thing on the the adjustment for the traffic was for counts, not for parking. There is no adjustment for parking that was that came from the state.
Okay, I I appreciate that. And on the traffic specifically, you you conducted a traffic counts on October 29, a Friday, and October 30, a Saturday. Why did you not count on a Monday and a Wednesday of that week as well?
So so typically, we never count on Mondays. So for.
Why is that?
Like, so typically, we would count midweek, non-holiday weeks for for, say, we're doing roadway projects. That's when we would do counts. For this particular project at the time, we knew there were uses that were going in that had shifted peak demand hours of Friday and Saturday during different times. So that's why we did the counts for those.
I guess where I'm going with this is for I would expect that traffic on Highland Avenue and Second Avenue would be higher during the week than the weekend. And so the and I and I would have expected a broader traffic count on more than one weekday part.
Sure. So we we did not, we did not do a traditional traffic impact study for this. We we did a parking occupancy study. The HRs we did were were really just to so we had an understanding of which street the traffic was coming from. If that makes sense. But we didn't do, for instance, we didn't do a level of service at intersections and things like that.
I noticed that. I was going to ask questions about why you didn't do that.
Because we we only did a parking study, that's why.
We, would it be customary when we're dealing with a special permit and a change of use to have a traffic study in addition to a a parking study?
It really depends. It really depends on the magnitude. Can you can you hear me?
We can we can hear you well.
Fine. It really depends upon the magnitude of the change that's that's being proposed. In this case, I don't think the magnitude of the change is being proposed warranted a new traffic study.
So I appreciate that. And then, Mr. Kiefner, I I'm curious what I if I recall, you're saying that there's roughly a 11, 1,000 or 1,100 entrances and exits somewhere around there a day on on the Friday. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes.
And that's under the current condition?
That is under the current condition, yeah.
Or the condition as of October 29 and October 30, is that right?
Yes.
And.
Clarify that. Does that include the FW Web?
Yes, it's exactly. It does. It's all the traffic that was in that was happening those two days.
So how many? How many cars do you and how many additional cars? Do you have a calculation of how many additional cars you expect, where you just kept using that based on the parking figure?
So we we didn't look at at what you're referring to is trip generation. We didn't look at trip generation. We only looked at parking for this study.
And how many parking spaces do you anticipate in isolation just for this one use over the duration of their hours that they're open?
So the 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 IT guidelines, the IT guidance has it's not a fixed number because it the the demand changes throughout the day, but the peak demand, I think, was 16 spaces based on the square footage of of Carbon Health.
And just for clarity, Rick, what's the total number of staff on premises on a given day?
The total number max would be eight, but if you remember the the testimony that was provided by the doctor, they typically have four to six people, staff in their in their facilities. And they also, he also pointed out, pardon me, they did not expect on the high end, they did not expect more than 20 patients per day. So IT guidance aside, the reality is you're talking about a much less parking demand in reality.
So let's say, let's just say then they're they had 15 patients a day as opposed to 20. And at at 15 patients a day, that's 15 cars, although I recognize that's spread out. But 15 cars a day plus the typical four to six, let's say, five. So now you're at roughly 20 spaces in which the parking demand reflects a peak of 16 spaces.
Over the course of the day, however, Adam, as you pointed out, there the in reality is that they have a lunch, a religiously taken lunch hour, where they do not see patients during the normal lunch hour from 12 to 1. So that it it mitigates against the possibility of the really peak period, which of course is generated by Panera, which is the noon hour.
Okay. That's the extent of my questions with respect to parking and traffic. I I do have some other questions about other parts of the application, which I guess we can pick up on after our colleagues have exhausted their questions on parking and traffic. Thank you very much.
Okay, Gene McKnight?
Yes, I I want to make sure I understand when the the situation on the ground at that site, when those parking studies were taken. There was some discussion about not including FW Web. What I really want to understand is when the parking studies were done on, was it October 29th and October 30th? What tenants were there? What what was vacant? What was being used on that site?
True. Do you want me to take a shot at that, or is Mike Mike is probably the better one to answer that?
Mike, why don't you respond?
Yeah, I'm here. So on October 29, FW Web was open, Omaha Steaks was open, Geico was open, Panera was open, and Supercuts was closed.
Okay, so of the the uses shown on the property overview plan, only did you say Supercuts was closed?
That's correct.
Okay, so I misunderstood what was said about FW web. Is it that when you then projected the future parking, you somehow discounted FW web? I'm trying to grasp what the back and forth was with Chair Paul Alpert on on that subject, and I didn't quite follow it.
Sure, so I can let me try to explain that. So what we what we tried to do was to compare the uses that we know are going to be in there. Okay, so the the previous, the initial report that we submitted had ex golf in there, okay? We know Axgolf is not going in there. So the updated report has the uses in it that we know are going in. As of now, there's nothing, nothing going into the FW web building. So that is vacant. There's no count. There's no parking assigned to that use because we don't know what that use is.
So the line in the that was just up on the screen, change in parking demand. The the future parking demand that peaks at eighty nine on a weekday doesn't include the parking demand from that big building FW web?
That's correct.
So and and so my point, Gene,
Yeah.
which Mr. Man concurred with is that when we have a special permit application in front of us for the use of the FW web building, they're gonna need a tenant, I mean, assuming assuming that these parking projections hold up. Well, first of all, a a new study will have to be done so that we will know what the actual parking demand is on the ground, because these are projections. And well, we will then have projections of the new use in the FW web building and what their parking demand is going to be and when their peak hours are. And if their peak hours are going to, if 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 these projections hold up and their peak hours are also between I'm looking at between one thirty and two thirty, actually, probably earlier than that, like between noon or twelve thirty and one thirty. They're gonna have a problem with us because there's not gonna be enough parking during those peak hours. However, if it's a use for that building where their peak hours are gonna be between four and six in the afternoon, there are gonna be plenty of spaces available.
Mister Chair, Mister Chair, could I just say one thing? I just want to make sure that you understand because I think I think we're gonna have to have a condition in this decision then that addresses that. Because the base permit at this property allows as of right for retail or craft or consumer service to go into that building as of right without coming back to you. So there's gonna have to be something put in this decision that doesn't allow a redevelopment of that property or reuse of that property until this parking study is presented. Because currently, the permit allows it to happen without coming back to you.
Agreed.
One of those, if one of those uses go 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 in.
Well, well, I'm not sure that I object to that. I just want to point out that there is in the existing decision a parking waiver. And if we're going to modify the the basic elements that went into that waiver, we're gonna have to request a new waiver, just as we are today. So I think you already
You I think that's true, Rick, but if a retail use goes in or craft or consumer service use goes in, that's already embedded into this into that parking waiver. And it's currently allowed in that building, so I just I just want to point that out.
And may I go back to the chart? I'm looking at Figure A, the one that's on on the screen, I think. And yeah, it appears to be the same as what's on the papers. So the blue line that says occupied spaces, existing uses, that reflects the counts that were done in on October twenty ninth when FW web was open?
Let me double check that, but I believe it's yes.
It does. Okay, so the purple line is 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 it the blue line plus the green line?
Yes, it is.
So if the if the use that goes into the FW web building doesn't have any more demand than what was seen on the site for FW web in October twenty ninth, there won't be a problem. I mean, we have to wait and see, but if the purple line is simply the sum of the blue line with the green line put on top of it, and the blue line includes the traffic from FW web, then maybe, you know, then
Oh, it's my understanding that the purple line has has the FW web demand taken out of it.
It does. It does. I guess I would, I want
Well, how was the FW web demand even calculated? I mean, you you just looked at demand over the whole parking lot based on
No, because we we
occupied spaces, didn't you?
No, because we we counted people going to FW web and to Omaha Steaks to know. And and we we knew which cars they came from. So we knew how many cars parked belonged to those people going to those uses. So that's how we could subtract those out.
So the blue line occupied spaces existed uses does not include FW web?
It includes FW web. The blue line is as of October of twenty twenty one, all the uses on the site.
So then, Gene, they they to get to the purple line, they subtracted, if I understand, Mr. Kiefner, you subtracted at the number of cars going into FW web. And you subtracted the cars going into Omaha Steaks and Supercuts. And then you added from basically Panera plus Carbon Health and maybe one other business. Is that correct?
Well, almost. So the first part you said is exactly right. So we took the the we took all the we took all the occupied spaces, subtracted those. All right, let me go back a slide if we can. So the very top one, customer counts from the uses to be removed, Omaha Steaks and Frank Web were subtracted from the observed counts. Okay, and then Carbon Health was then added to it.
Okay.
Okay. So we didn't actually have counts for Panera or Geico. But those aren't changing. So we subtracted the ones that are being removed and added the new use to it.
And they were bred in Geico are already in the blue line.
That's right. Yep.
And and Supercuts was already closed.
Exactly.
But but Carbon Health is is going into the space that was occupied by Supercuts and Omaha Steaks.
Right, so the the green line is is the is the the change in parking, which is it's basically the the Carbon Health, probably minus FW web, minus Omaha Steaks, if you think of it that way.
So if 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 you want to think of it this way, it's it's not that the purple line is the green line plus the blue line. It's that the green line is the purple line minus the blue line. That's how they got the green line.
Okay.
Okay.
But any bottom line is it's still gonna be, you know, something we're gonna take a hard look at when and somebody comes along and wants to reoccupy FW web. Is that that's the bottom line? So I will sue it further, but it's
So Lee, if I'm correct, this special permit that we're amending is the special permit for the entire for for the entire property.
Or you're, yes, you're amending it to allow this new use to come in, and I think you're gonna have to have a condition to deal with their web building now because the parking analysis doesn't have a base a base retail calculation associated with it, so.
So because so because we're amending the special permit for the entire property, the condition that we have there is not specific to to an FW web special permit. It's it it covers Mr. Moskowitz's property, and therefore he is bound by it when when he has a tenant for FW web. And it's going to be carefully drafted and worded. Okay. So, Gina, you all set?
I guess so, yeah.
Okay, Natasha, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't.
And Marty, do you have any questions or comments?
No, but I think you you and Gene have focused on the big problem, which is the next application when somebody comes in to fill the web space.
Yes.
That's gonna be the difficulty.
Okay. Yes, Adam, you have something else.
Thank you. I did. I did want to, I I'm okay to remove the screen share for the traffic if everyone else is.
Sure.
Thank you. I I I did actually want to go back because I was not resolved at our last hearing about the definition questions. And while personally, you know, my own type one diabetes is managed entirely by a professional, a nurse practitioner, who I would regard as a medical practitioner, our building commissioner, you know, has perhaps a different opinion. So that's where that set. But to return to to return to the opinion by Foley and and Lardner, which frankly, I don't hold much weight. It does not. And I don't, I do not find that conclusive, to say the least. I find it colloquially iffy. It talks about you know, a number of circumstances, and yet I just want to get a little more clarity. I see we have that one of the doctors who will be on supervising the location. But if you can forgive me, I I can't remember your, I don't remember your name, and I don't know how to pronounce it.
That's fine. Dr. Lufadeji. It's good to be here.
Dr. Lufadeji, did I pronounce that correctly? All right. Thank you very much, and thanks for being here. And thanks for indulging me here. If I understand correctly, does Carbon Health currently have over a hundred locations across the country?
That is correct.
And you're intending to open up more across the country over the course of the next eight months? Is that correct?
We continue to open, not necessarily, I don't know where the eight month timeframe is from, but we continue to open up more offices. Yeah.
So you're gonna continue regardless of the eight months, you're gonna continue to open up?
We hope so.
And what I what I wonder here is we're saying that, I just have to pull it up here, that Rick, the practice is not going to be regarded I I as a clinic and would not need to be licensed because of this exemption, which if I understand correctly, states, among other things, that clinics should not include a medical office building or one or more practitioners engage in a solo or group practice, whether conducted for profit or not for profit, and however organized. So long as such practice is wholly owned and controlled by one or more of the practitioners so associated. It seems to me, and I had an opportunity to consult with town council, that practitioners so associated would include would would mean the doctor that's actually providing care at the location. And I don't, can you explain to me how that's remotely possible? When the doctor is overseeing the business and overall medical operations in more than a hundred locations and potentially more than a hundred and twenty locations by the time the year is out?
I see. I can try to explain that to you. So I think there's a mix up here between what you're thinking about, which is the Carbon Health Medical Group of Florida, right? And then Carbon Health Technologies, which is kind of the parent company. If you think about a McDonald's, for example, not every McDonald's center is owned by Ronald McDonald, right? This it's, I'm trying to use the franchise model to drive the model home. We're not a franchise, but it's an example of kind of how you would think about it. So myself and Dr. Mandavia are strongly involved in the operations here in Massachusetts. For example, last week, I actually worked at the clinic in downtown Boston. And so I will be involved in kind of clinical practice. So I'm not overseeing a hundred clinics, right? So I, as far as
I understand you're not, you're not the owner of the practice. And the definition speaks to, I think, that ownership. In other words, it's a solo doctor.
Mandavia?
Who owns the practice? If I could interrupt for one second, I don't, Adam, I don't necessarily agree with your premise. First of all, I think it's important to note that associated with does not necessarily mean what you indicated, that they're actually hands-on making the diagnoses, et cetera, for every patient. That is not what the word means. We went through that on on March fifteen, I think, in great detail. How many of the things the doctor was quote involved with as associated with the practice? And I think it satisfies any reasonable test. Again, you're focused in on the actual performance of medical care or the delivery of medical care as one element. That is not the only element of being quote associated with.
Which is why, Rick, with all due respect, I want I want the just to verify exactly what you're saying. I actually want an opinion, not from Latin, from that law firm, but from the Massachusetts Board of Registration and Medicine to to opine on that. I don't hold that much water on that opinion. It's not to say that I'm against the use, but I just I it this I'm very troubled by this. It seems, it it does seem to me like we're parsing words here. And and my understanding is that it's it's intended to be understood by the public through this definition that the owner doctor is associated what is one of the practitioners. And the practitioner implies providing care. I need I need to see my endocrinologist four times a year or my nurse practitioner four times a year. At least, sorry, I see I I about four times a year. I have to regulate my kidneys, my pancreas, which doesn't work, my liver and other and thyroid and other parts of my body. And the practitioner is the is the doctor that I'm the physician that I'm seeing on site. And I understand that this other doctor, that you're gonna be the one that's gonna be providing the clinical treatment on a day-to-day basis, like you talked about and provided testimony before at our previous hearing, where you'll take appointments in that location. And on the days that you're not in the Needham location, for instance, you might be in the Boston location or other locations. There'll be nurse nurse practitioners and other staff that can handle a kid who comes in who's got the flu, who can do some COVID testing and COVID vaccinations. If a kid breaks an arm, they could probably, you know, provide a cast and do an X-ray. Maybe do stitches if necessary. If you know, if you're not there. But the challenge is that my understanding is that practitioner, the person involved in the in the practice, the physician involved in the practice of medicine is, you know, is who is associated with that that practice is effectively there. So I would either, so I I'm I'm leaning towards requiring a condition that the Massachusetts Board of Registration and Medicine validates the organizing principle for this operation.
So what I'm hearing you saying, Adam, if I may, to try to distill this down a little bit. If you have If you have. One doctor. Who owns. An LLC medical practice. Forget about a hundred and twenty, just two offices, okay? One in Needham, one in Waltham. And one doctor is the sole member of the LLC that owns it. But he has another doctor working for him. Who will be supervising and operating the Needham office, but the owner of the LLC is never in Needham. He's only in Waltham. And you're saying, and you're saying that because the owner of the LLC is not associated with the Needham office. It's a, the Needham office is a clinic. That needs to be licensed under. Fifty-one. That's what I hear you saying.
You're saying needs to be licensed as a clinic?
As a clinic, under chapter one eleven, section fifty-one.
Because these.
That's the case, Adam. I mean, I mean, I don't, I don't, I think, I think the exception. Goes to that kind of a thing, but, but you raise an interesting question. You know, we're parsing the words. Marty, do you?
Well, I think what Adam is saying. Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what you're saying is we can parse the words all we want. Foley and Lardner can parse the words all we want. The simple way to find out if it needs to be licensed as a clinic is to ask the licensing authority. Does this operation need to be licensed as a clinic?
A hundred percent correct.
Of course, that's what they don't want to do. That's why they got the, that's why they got the opinion from.
I understand that. And, and Rick, is it fair to say that there is some concern that if you did get. Borum to opine on this, that they actually might regard this as a clinic?
Well, you, you, you read the Foley Lardner memorandum, and, and you know, you point out, I think your words were iffy. I don't necessarily agree with that, but I understand when you look at an opinion. And the lawyers on the, on the board, I, I think would probably affirm this statement. There's virtually an opinion or not an opinion ever been rendered by an attorney. They didn't have some iffy to it. That is the nature of the.
With all due respect, I mean, Rick, I'm going to interrupt you here. And I'll tell you why I find that offensive. It's offensive because it suggests that if you're not a lawyer, you don't understand a legal opinion. And that's inappropriate.
Adam, that's.
I myself, I myself have ordered several. Legal opinions. And while I understand there is a degree of ifiness. The ifiness factor in this. Is really up to the line like I've never seen before. And I've worked on countless copyright title opinions that, that parsed words pretty sufficiently. And yet I've never seen an opinion like this, and I, and I assure you that I have enough intellect to understand this and to read it. The same way you do.
Adam, I, I, I have to say, and Mr. Chair, I, I consider that to be a little bit beyond the pale. That is, I was not suggesting that any other party was incapable of understanding the opinion. That is an unfair characterization. I prefer just to move on, however.
Let me, can I step in, Rick? Let me ask you. And I don't know whether you will agree with what, the way I stated the issue to Adam, but. What's the problem with asking the licensing authority? Do we need to be licensed as a medical clinic?
I think, Marty, if you're in this position, or if any lawyer was in this position where they have a reasoned opinion on something. Let's say it was a tax to do that by analogy. Somebody gave a tax opinion relative to a deduction that. Was not crystal clear. You, you presumably would not ask that, or would not expect the attorney to go to the IRS and to seek. A, an opinion or, or yes or no on that. That, that would be impractical, and it would be something which just isn't done as a matter of custom. I'm not suggesting that they, my client wouldn't necessarily do that, but it hasn't been discussed. They have gone forward based upon legal counsel's opinion that this is a proper and appropriate way to approach this. And, you know, I'll certainly discuss this with them, but I can understand why they might not want to do that. I believe in the last meeting, Marty, you said the same thing, that you could understand why they would not want to do that.
For the, for the benefit of those who are listening, I mean, my question to you just now is, as a devil's advocate. I, I, I understand what you're saying. Some people might not get why you wouldn't want to make that approach.
Again, not up to me to make that decision, but I'll certainly discuss it with my client.
Rick, refresh my memory. There are clinics owned by this LLC already opened in Massachusetts, correct?
You're using the loaded term, Paul, but there are, there are other similar facilities, yes, that are owned and operating in Massachusetts.
Right. And you have not sought a, based on. The opinion or similar opinions that you've gotten, they've opened, they have not. They, they, they have gone under the assumption that they are not a clinic. Based on, based on their lawyers reading of the statute and saying. You don't need to get a license from the board as a clinic under chapter one eleven, section fifty-one. And so there are already, there are already operating in Massachusetts. I believe there are two or maybe more.
I believe there's one, Doctor, can you, are there two functioning?
Just put up two.
No, there, there's one, there's one open and functioning, and there's one that's getting built out that we've already got in clear waiver and is set to open.
Okay, so, so there's only one operating now. And then you're looking to open in Needham, and you're looking to open in Denham.
Yeah, the Denham one is already all signed, still delivers, getting built out already.
Yeah. So, so Adam, there are already going forward. Based on this, there's already a, a medical office facility similar to what's going into Needham. Based on their having reached that conclusion. They haven't been closed down yet. And I use the word yet.
The definitions in it, but the zonings, the zoning between.
The zoning is a different issue.
Exactly.
The zoning is a different issue, and the Foley opinion does not go to zone, to, to our zoning by law at all.
True.
Only to chapter one eleven, section fifty-one, fifty-two. Jean, did you want to weigh in on this?
Yes, and I recall making the same or similar statement at the other session of the hearing. And what I recall is the rules of, for this zoning district and what we wanted to allow in it. We, we wanted to concentrate. The largest scale medical. Facilities in the area close to the hospital in our town. And we didn't. Want such facilities elsewhere. What troubles me is not so much the question of whether this is a clinic or not. As to whether this is. A group practice, it's. I mean, our, and that depends, I mean, our building inspector said it's, it's, it's not a, a group practice. It's simply. A, a professional office. And he says that nurses and paraprofessionals are conspicuously absent from the definition of professional.
Right, so, yeah. If I may just interject quickly.
Yeah.
For clarity, my, so my understanding of what our bylaw makes the distinction of. It, it's not that it's a group practice or not a group practice. It's either a large group practice, which is more than two professionals. Or a small group practice, which is no more than two professionals.
Yes.
And then we have to get into the definition of professional. And, and in this district, a large group practice is not allowed, and a small group practice is allowed by special permit. And a clinic, and a clinic which is licensed is not allowed.
Yeah. So then we get to the definition of professional.
Right.
A person who by education and experience is a member of a recognized profession. Such as a physician, dentist, architect, attorney, artist, or engineer. It's such as. I mean, if you, you know, I just did a search for the, for the definition of medical professional, and of course, it includes. Physicians assistants and nurse practitioners. And that's exactly what's being proposed here. A group of such professionals, four to six usually, a maximum of eight. Occasionally. Occasionally, there will be an MD present, and there's, there'll always be an MD available. Remotely, I guess. That, to me. The opinion that says those medical professionals working there are not. Within our definition of professional is incorrect. I don't agree with it.
Just to be, just to be clear, Jean, you're, you're referring to our building inspectors reading.
Yeah, that's right.
That terminology.
Yes.
We're saying we could simply. Take the opposite opinion, that it does include nurses, for example, and that.
Or in particular, nurse practitioners.
Nurse practitioners or, or nurses. So we could take the position that the way this operation has been presented and described to us, it will always have. More than two professionals as we define them, present, and therefore.
It's not allowed. Therefore, it's a large group practice and therefore not allowed in this.
Yeah, and, and maybe that's antiquated. I mean, medical practice has changed so much. In, in recent years, that maybe our zoning by law is antiquated, and we should be considering revising it. And because reconsidering the idea of where we want such medical practices to be located and not located. But I, I just don't agree with the opinion. I am troubled by that.
If I could respond to a couple of points, Mr. Chair. Number one, Ed, Ed, is that okay, Paul?
Please do.
So, as to the point of proximity to the hospitals. I believe, Lee, you can confirm that the district, which not only abuts our property, but it actually runs through our property. Which is the New England Business District, allows this use, which again, is nowhere near the hospitals. Is that correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank.
And I realized that the Children's Hospital is putting a facility there. You know, I should, I should have noted.
And we had to amend our bylaws for Children's Hospital.
Secondly.
Yeah.
Secondly, relative to the issue of the definitions, we, we did. Spend quite a bit of time on March fifteen going through those definitions. And I thought it was at least, at least the majority view, if not a unanimous view. That because of the actual language that was used, and particularly because in other aspects and other provisions of the bylaw. There was in fact, a, a mentioning of nurse practitioners and other types of paraprofessionals. As being included together with physicians, and in this particular section, there was not.
Although, Rick, to be clear, that's what you're referring to is a reference to parking.
But, but it, yeah.
I'm, I'm going to state that my recollection is slightly different. My recollection is that we discussed it. But we certainly didn't take a vote as to whether.
I, I didn't suggest.
Whether we had reached a conclusion. We had not, I, I do not actually reach, recall reaching a conclusion among the board members.
Clearly not.
As to this.
Clearly not. I, 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 I think I was pretty clear by saying there was a majority, but clearly not a unanimous decision. And, and I do believe, if you go back and look at the video, Mr. Chair, not that it matters. That there was a concurrence of at least among three, if not four members, relatively.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Lee, but don't we need four votes for this special permit?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not arguing the technicality, Mr. Chair, I, please, that wasn't my intent. But we are, we are going back over ground that we did discuss. I understand, Adam, your position, and I respect what you have to say. Where do we go from here?
I think the board needs to resolve itself on whether or not it's going to require as a condition. A determination by Borem on the one hand. And two, on the definition, perhaps, as, as Jean is referring to on, on professional. I mean, I, I do find it interesting that our definition of professional includes and. Includes only by way of an example, an artist. And yet a nurse practitioner. Who orders my blood work, who analyzes my blood work, who prescribes treatment for me. You know, you know, maybe regarded, may not be regarded as a professional. Without her. I'm in trouble. I can't live. I can go without seeing that, you know, the. The endocrinologist. But she has every bit of as much authority under medicine as Dr. Sullivan does. And she, and she can provide every level of treatment and care that as a type one diabetic I need. Without which. I'm in trouble, serious trouble.
I don't think anybody disputes the importance of, of those individuals. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just, I just, I think what, what Adam's trying, I, I mean, I think that the big picture here is that. If someone is a professional, they will be seeing a certain amount of patients. If people are, are seeing as support, it probably won't add necessarily additional patients. So the more. People that are classified as professionals that can take patients on their own will increase the amount of people in the office. So if we feel that the nurse practitioners are, are, are each handling different patients, which will increase traffic. It will increase parking, it will increase people in the building. I think that's the, that's the difference. Between the professional and the support. This, because the team of a professional with support. Will treat the same patient, but won't treat individual patients. Is that what we're getting to?
That's, that's excellent. Yes.
I think that's, I think you've synthesized it very well.
And can we, and we, we could keep talking and talking about this, but in order to resolve it. Since we have a building inspector's. Letter. And we're questioning it. Should we seek an opinion from town council and then rely on that? On the interpretation of our own zoning by law?
Adam, do you want to speak to that?
I think, I think it might be helpful. I mean, I do, I respect our building commissioner and his authority. And yet, and yet. His letter was based, his December twenty-nine letter, I think, was based on a con, on a conversation with. With Attorney Mann. And. I don't doubt Mr. Mann's ability to adequately explain that the business model. And yet I'm not sure if all of these issues, because none of us were privy to that discussion. If all of those issues, including the question about what is a professional. And how a nurse practitioner, for instance, or a physician's assistant for that matter. May or may not otherwise be regarded as a professional, although, Rick, I do recognize. That, you know, that it, they're called out elsewhere, for instance, in dealing with parking. I think that that. I, I, I don't know that our building commissioner has had the ability to contemplate these types of issues. Perhaps I'm, perhaps I'm wrong. But that's what he's identified that he's based it on, and, you know, it still also leaves, you know, another question. About whether it's appropriate to have Borum provide guidance. I, you know. Rick, I guess, you know, I don't know that you specifically answered Marty's earlier question. Are you, are you? Is it fair to say that your client may, may not wish to produce. Uh, a letter from, uh, Borem confirming this model. Because there is some potential. That Borem may recognize this as a clinic. Is that correct?
Well, well, first of all, I'm not sure that it's Borem. I think it's the Department of Public Health, uh, Adam, but, but be that as it may. Um, I would, I would have, I don't want to speak for them on the issue, having not discussed it with them. That would be inappropriate, but I will discuss it with them and see. You know, I, I can understand a hesitancy to do that. Again, I, I think when you have a reasoned opinion. Um, that is often seen, it's often deemed by somebody in a position of carbon health to be enough. And they don't want to push the edge of the envelope any further. Um, I, again, haven't discussed this with them directly, so I indicated that I would and it will. Um, as far as going to town council to, you know, further discuss the interpretation, if that's the, the will of the board. That's certainly something that, you know, I'm happy to do. Um, I think we had in fact, uh, discussed this fairly robustly at the last meeting, but I understand. You know, people have thought about it and they have different perspective on it. Um, I'm happy to do that as well. I do, I do think we should. Wrap it up though and move on and, and come up with a game plan for how to get to the end of the, of the issue, uh, that's satisfactory to everybody.
That's certainly fair, Rick.
I do, I do have a question, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
I'm trying to read, read the bylaw here and it says that, um. A medical, surgical, psych, dental, orthodontic or psych group practice comprises of three or more such professionals. The question I have is the definition there of the word comprised, is that to mean? People that work there, people that own the business, people that are physically present? What, what does that, if?
That's what I was just trying to find myself and I couldn't find it. Do you, do you have in front of you, can you tell me what page on, of our bylaw that's on?
Uh, I'm just looking at just the section. So this is section, uh, three point two point three point one.
Three point two point three point one.
So while he's looking for it, how many people, how many people will be working there?
In total? In total, we usually have so four people, but only one of them. So for example, it will be myself, the physician. A medical assistant, uh, plus or minus an X-ray tech and it's, and a front desk person. On the days when I'm not physically available, there will be a nurse practitioner or P A. A medical assistant, a support staff and a front desk person.
So there will be two people always look, talking to patients or seeing patients.
If you, if you count the medical assistant, that is correct.
You mean medical assistant, you mean a physician's assistant?
No, medical assistant, meaning a tech, meaning the person who initially gets the vitals, not a physician's assistant.
So if you're going to have less than two people. The, and where you're allowed to have less than two people, so then what is?
Two or less.
Exactly.
Two or less. So if either they're going to have two or less. You're, they're going to have a doctor or a nurse practitioner and support.
Correct.
So if, so then.
No more than two at any one time.
So that news, so that neutralizes the question, I think about, you know, the question about professional.
Well, yes, I, I didn't understand that. I thought that there would be more than one.
So did I. That's why I was asking now because you cap it and two.
Dealing with patients, um, as Natasha had, had explained, that would be, an issue would be concerned about. There will, there will not be more than two medical professionals if we include nurse practitioners and physician's assistants.
At any given time, there will be not more than two. If we were to include nurse practices and physician assistant in the definition of professional. If we went to include that, even with that, there will not be.
There would not be more than two, so.
So just, I, I, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that, uh, your operating, uh, system. Trying to remember what was said at a, at a hearing, uh, so it was hard.
And fairness to you, Jean, we, we did not get into that specific issue at the last meeting. We did get into the issue very much so. Uh, as to, you know, what the, the word comprised meant in terms of the, uh, the constitution of the, the practice, but focused mostly on the doctors.
So Rick, this, so this is very helpful and I think it's, this has been a very clarifying process. Would you be okay with the condition in the, uh, decision? That read that at no time shall there be more than two of. A, uh, physician, B, a nurse practitioner. And C, a physician's assistant.
That's what he was just, the, the doctor was just telling us.
Yeah, I would say that if we were going to go with such a specific clause, we should add something that says. Delivering medical care and any given point in time, because for, as you can imagine, if I'm working and I bring on an N P that I want to train. Right? And, you know, because I'm training an N P, there happens to be another physician in the building. I did not want to violate your bylaws. But if you, I'm, I'm comfortable with that as long as we put in that says like delivering medical care. At any time, because there could be days when we will have more than two in the building, but they will not be delivering care. Uh, there will be not be more than two delivering care at the same.
So in other, so in other words. Uh, other than for non-training purposes. There will never be more than two. At any given time of A, a nurse practitioner, B, a physician's assistant and three, a physician.
You mean, other than for training purposes?
Correct, other, correct.
Correct, or admin purposes or visiting the clinic purposes. For the purpose of.
Medical care.
Exactly.
Yeah, so. Just any medical care.
Yeah, so I, I think we're getting close to, you know, to resolving that. I guess the question is. That I see one of the outstanding questions is how we. I, I think I would be curious. What our, I would like to have town council. Provide an understanding on whether or not they would recommend, you know, uh, um. Determination by Borem in this instance. And what their understanding of, you know, practors, practitioners so associated. References. Cause that's not really discussed in Commissioner Roach's.
No, but it is, it is very much discussed in the full yard.
Yes, I, I, I acknowledge that. The problem I'm saying, Rick, is that I don't hold.
No, I, I understand, I understand. I, I, I. I don't object to, to that, Adam, just for the record. I mean, it, again. I think it's fair to, to say to town council, look, this is the memorandum of law that we received and. Uh, make sure that town council thinks it's a credible. You know, determination. I think that's appropriate. Going back to. The state agency and requiring that as a condition, I, I frankly don't think that that's. Uh, that's reasonable or fair, quite frankly, but I do understand the town council, uh, determination and I would not object to it.
I can understand and appreciate why you'd say it's, you know, it's unwanted and perhaps unfair. I, I recognize that. But it doesn't necessarily mean that it's not the right thing to do for the board.
I'm confused by the definition. And where we're going with this. Because I'm looking at section three point two point four point one, seems to be where the definition is. And the, um.
What was that again? Uh, that reference, please, Paul?
Three point two point four point one, which is cross-referenced in our, in the district that we're in. A group practice. The group practice is. Uh, a professional. Um, not including a medical clinic. Um, group practice comprised of three or more such professionals. So the practice, the group practice. Comprises three or more such professionals and we're parsing the words to say. Three or more professionals at the location at any one time.
Not quite.
So if you've got, if you've got a group practice of five doctors. But you only have two doctors in this location at any one time, because that's what our special permit. Requires in order to get it out of the definition of a group practice. Have we gotten it out of the definition of a group practice or is it? How many professionals are it total in the practice, whether they're on the location or not? Maybe that's the question for, for town council.
Again, Mr. Chair, I, again, um, we spent a fair amount of time, or at least I did pontificating on that point, uh, back on March 15th.
Yes, but Rick, I think, I think you have to realize, I think you have to realize, if I may, I think you have to realize that. How I'm reading the discussion we've had so far. I'm not sure you've got four votes.
Mr. Chair, I'm not, you didn't let me finish my sentence.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just giving a preface to saying, I, I think. We can go around in a circle on this, you know, for quite some time. I think that, uh, Adam's suggestion that. We defer the matter to town council is, is probably the right way to go. And, um, and I, you know, I'm not disputing that, so I, I wasn't trying to put words in your mouth or anything of that nature.
And I, for, but for clarity, what I think, what we're describing here. Is they're not coming in as a group practice. They're coming in under a separate definition. And I think that that definition in which they're coming in. Is fairly consistent with the concept of an urgent care where you have. You know, you know, it's not like I going to a, um, a primary care. Where you might have three or four doctors at any given time there in addition to nurse practitioners. What I would regard as medical assistants, which are not, with, you know, which might be medical techs and so on. Uh, you know, this, what we're talking about is there will never be. Uh, there will never be that, um, uh, the, the, you know, the doctor. A nurse practitioner and, uh, physician's assistant. Can, at the same location, which is key because they can't have more than two under the definition which they're applying. Except if that nurse practitioner or physician's assistant is being trained. And is themselves not on their own, seeing a, seeing a patient and treating a patient. And I, to me, that I think that resolves that some of the depth, I don't know if this is the right word, but definitional questions. Uh, that had been, that had been raised before.
I, I, I think, I think so long as the doctor, um, and I think he's made his statement pretty clearly that he thinks that. That, uh, carbon health can live with that limitation. I think that's, that's a fair, a fair way of doing it. That doesn't resolve the other issues I recognize, but at least it gets us beyond that.
And are we satisfied with the parking study? So we don't need to revisit that?
Hey, I'm satisfied with the parking study.
With the concerns that were raised, uh, about future changes on the site.
But it sounds like, it sounds like we're going to keep the hearing open. In order to get an opinion from town council.
Just, just as a reminder, folks.
Um, yeah. Oh geez, oh geez, Mr. Jacobs.
Yeah. I just want everybody to remember, this is my last full meeting, although we're going to have some kind of a brief meeting on April 12th.
That's right.
Can this all be resolved by April 12th or is my success are going to have to? Sit through and listen to all of these hearings before they can.
But that's, that's because, just to be clearly, is that because without Marty? We. We, we need for this, we need a unanimous consent of at least four remaining board members to approve. Is that correct?
You need four, more, more members to approve. If Marty can't, if Marty can't participate, the new member can't participate. The new member cannot participate in this.
Uh, so you have to be unanimous among the four of you.
But legitimately, without knowing town council's schedule, I suppose it's theoretically possible that we could. We could do that.
Except we, except we have to do a decision. Um, it has to be prepared and voted and. Um, which is all we were, we were planning on doing that next Tuesday. I don't, I don't know how we do a decision. Uh, for next, for next Tuesday.
I, hopefully we'll have four votes and then I guess it won't matter.
Who's going to Vegas?
Not me. This is a public hearing.
Yeah.
Although actually, I'm sorry, we do have to make sure that all of the planning board members. Don't have any further questions or comments at this time before I go to the, to the attendees.
I do not.
Okay, we all set. I can, um, looking at the attendees, um. Hands are, hands are going up. So, um. Alex, if you would bring Jill Khan over, please.
Jill, good to see you again. How are you?
Hi, nice to see you all too. Um, I just wanted to speak briefly because it's late. About the question which has gone around about. Are nurse practitioners professionals? Okay. These nurse practitioners have at least two and often three years post a bachelor's degree. So if we are going to just look at a comparison, let's take. The building inspector, let's just say person X, so that we don't make it personal. Okay? Let's say a building inspector in Needham. I'm just going to say, I don't think that that person has two or three years. Post a bachelor's degree. So would that mean that the building inspector, him or herself is not a professional? I have a very dear friend of many years who lives here in Needham and works in Brighton. And many years as a nurse practitioner. And she provided me this answer about the years of training. I think it's very relevant and I think it's relevant to this whole discussion. She said there is not a one size fit all easy answer. Um, about how many years of training. She said there are two ways generally to become a nurse practitioner. One way is four years of college for an R N B S degree and then one to two years after that of a nurse practitioner. That's one way. So that's six years of training. Or a second way is a college degree in an unrelated area and then three years of study. All right. So that way would be seven years. So it's six to seven years. Of professional study. So I don't think that. We should ever consider a nurse practitioner in any way, shape or form to not be. A professional. And I think that's a big issue here because if somebody's looking at a 30 year old. Zoning law where maybe they were looking at, um, a different kind of nurse, maybe an L P N or an R N. Maybe that was a different issue, but these are people with six to seven years of professional training. So. Um, I think it's really an important issue. I also wanted to. Ask the doctor, I guess, I'm not sure who, but why are we talking about? That this carbon health is not licensed in Massachusetts, but we are considering allowing carbon health to open a clinic. An urgent care clinic in Need, in Needham.
Not licensed as a medical clinic. That's the difference.
What kind of clinic are, what are they licensed as?
They're, they, they are doctors who are licensed and therefore they don't have to be licensed as a clinic.
It's, and everybody who works there who requires to be licensed, it will be licensed. I think. That was stated on the March 15 hearing quite clearly. Not only by the doctor, but I think, Adam, if I'm not mistaken, you were very careful to clarify that point and I was grateful that you did.
We had an issue here in Needham. This very recently in November and December. Maybe into January in Needham Center, very visible right across from Town Hall. Of a clinic, which I believe, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I believe was not licensed. And it was allowed to operate and it had many, many issues and then it was required to be shut down. I think that we should have. Learned our lesson there and I think that we should be very, very prudent and very careful and very slow moving about approving. Any unlicensed clinic in Needham. I think we should have learned our lesson there. This is not the same company. But it's a fast-moving for-profit company that is, um. Aiming, it's targeting nationwide expansion with the announcement, this was somewhat recently of a hefty. $350 million funding round led by Blackstone's Horizon Platform. This investment will help this startup capitalize on its pandemic growth. So I think. My last point is I don't. my last point is, I don't understand why there seems to be a rush to get this off and running. I think this should be looked at carefully with prudence and very slowly and with great and deep thought.
I wish I knew more about what the operation was in Needham Center. Unfortunately, my, my knowledge of what was going on there is non-existent. I know that there was something there and, and they were closed down.
They were not, they were not, they were, they weren't providing, they were, they were conducting tests. But, you know, they weren't providing treatment. They weren't issuing scripts and so on. I think this is a little bit different than that scenario, although you know, and I understand your concern, Jill, that you're worried that if it's, if the clinic itself is not licensed as a clinic, that it will, you're inferring that it necessarily will provide subpar medical care and harm the patients.
I don't know that it would, but I am asking Needham, a town that I've lived in for 30 years and been a town meeting member for 23 of those years and a homeowner for 30 years, raised my children through the Needham Schools and serve on lots of committees, very involved, caring human being, and I'm asking Needham to move slowly. I don't understand why someone is trying to push this through. I think great depth of thought, caring and evaluation should be spent and a lot of time before any kind of approval is issued.
I think that's what we're doing.
I'm not sure. I agree, but thank you for your opinion.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jill. Um, I see another hand up, Elizabeth Caponia. Alex, if you would bring Elizabeth Caponia over, please. I'm sorry, I should have asked Jill for her address, but she's appeared before her, in this matter before, so we should have that in the record, but Elizabeth, I will ask you again for your name and address, please. Good to see you again.
Yes, good evening. My name's Elizabeth Caponia. I'm at 27 Highland Terrace in Needham, Town Meeting Member, Precinct J. And I've appeared prior about Carbon Health. I want to completely, as an aside, I want to completely agree with Jill Khan. Especially since in the town of Needham, we were so unfortunate to have the scam operation, uh, last, last December here where people's IDs were stolen and whatever. It was really bad. Um, now I'm addressing this evening, uh, the parking issue because it seems I, I've been to that parking lot often enough and I see that it is, it is a lot of traffic. This gets high use even though half the stores are closed down. Um, so we, we have, we have a medical office behind where I live and they have a nice parking lot and sometimes it's full, but it's never overly full because all their, all their patients are given appointments. Even when they were doing, um, the COVID vaccinations when they first came out and they was like, it was non-stop the activity. But everybody had an appointment, so nothing got crazy. Um, Carbon Health, on the other hand, is a totally different situation. Um, according to their website, it's COVID testing and vaccinations, travel testing, urgent care, primary care and walk-ins. So all this shows that there's really no way to calculate how many patients they're gonna get. If they're gonna get rushes of patients like things have been happening in the past. So to me, that makes the parking, to try to figure out the parking for Carbon Health, it's very, very unpredictable. And I, I think we need to err on the side of needing more parking spaces, not less. It seems every time these discussions come up, businesses, you know, you're saying, oh, they can do with less parking. I, I think Carbon Health is gonna break that model for the, for the little plaza. It's not gonna be able to handle it. So that is pretty much what I wanted to say tonight.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I can actually take that question. Um, thank you for airing your concerns. Everything you mentioned there, other than the walk-in, is actually appointment-based. And so a lot of the people that visit our offices actually all use appointments. As you were on the website, if you had clicked on any of those chief complaints, it would have shown you actually how to schedule an appointment at the Boston Clinic, for example. And I think to also buttress that, um, basically even in our busiest offices, we see about 20 people a day. Um, and even beyond that, excuse me. Excuse me. Um, thank you so much. Um, but, but even beyond that, I think one of the concerns that you've had is whether or not, um, you know, people will walk in and kind of clog that parking lot. We do a really good job of helping people understand actually that when we're at capacity, that we don't try to see any additional patients and we actually all refer them to booking online. So that is usually our preferred method. Um, as you know, in the middle, kind of in the height of the pandemic, when our waiting rooms were full, we would actually tell people to leave and come back later in the day when we could find an appointment for them. So we, we, um, everything, I'd say 70% to 80% of people that are seen in our offices are actually all appointment-based. And I think that's actually one of the things that we say, it's everything, it's on your phone. We use an app to, you know, send your results. We use an app to, to, to create the appointment. So we are very appointment-forward.
Any further comments or questions, Elizabeth?
Well, well, I, I just, you know, it sounds, it sounds great what he's saying. He's saying something to appeal to the board to get the parking waiver. Um, but I just see how it is at other similar clinics where I work in Chestnut Hill. We have one, one block away and there's people that make a line out the door at times, and this is even now. And, um, I'm looking at the Carewell Center, which is similar, uh, next to Trader Joe's and CBS. And they've had people, every time I go there, there's extra people just hanging out, trying to get in. So this kind, and there's one on, on Needham Street also, uh, such a facility to, for urgent care and things like that. Again, the people are lined out the door waiting. So, you know, that, that's the whole nature of this facility that Carbon Health is, is that they, I mean, I'm just looking at your website. So obviously if people have an immediate need, they're just gonna go down because they know they can be seen right away. Otherwise, they call their primary care physician. If they wanted, if they have time on their hands and wanted to make a normal appointment, they call primary care. But people who go to urgent centers like that, it's because they need the care right away and they just wanna get in their car and get there and be seen. So, um, you know, it sounds great that you're saying everybody has an appointment, but I don't quite believe it by seeing what's happening around me, where I work and where I live here in Needham. So that's, that's my concern and I hope the board, you know, takes that into consideration. Thank you. That's it.
May I ask the doctor a question on that?
Go ahead.
How, forgive me, were you saying that the, um, that your Boston location is the one that's up and the Dedham location is under construction?
That is correct.
How long has the Boston office been open for?
Uh, I want to say that it opened in January.
So are, are you able to, uh, provide for perhaps the next meeting? Um, uh, a summary of the total, the summary of the uh, average appointments, you know, per day? And of those, how many are, what percentage of those are walk-in and what percentage of those are appointment?
Uh, we can do that. I will say that one thing to consider is where we are in Boston. That location, it is, it's in the financial district, so it, there's a lot of just walk-in traffic where right at downtown crossing. And so that is a difference is that there's no parking. People don't actually come all the way there. So there's people literally walking by there that see, I think they wanna be seen. So that will skew that data, but I'm happy to, to find it for you.
So just, so just to be clear then to follow up, what you're saying is, are you saying that the, the patient model in Boston is different than the patient model in Needham, such that in Boston, it necessarily has a higher proportion or percentage of walk-in patient as opposed to appointment-driven patients? And the reverse will be true in Needham. That the, the vast majority of, of, um, of meetings, uh, our appointments will be by scheduled appointments as opposed to by walk-ins. Is that correct?
Yeah, so I, I think what you're saying is essentially the same, but just to expand shit on that a little bit. The reason why that is, is because that clinic is literally at downtown crossing, right? People who happen to walk there, still based on that, I think that percentage is probably still rings true. The kind of 70% appointments, the 30 walk-in, I'm just saying that if that number happens to be somewhat elevated, it is as a function of that Boston location.
So for the Needham location, uh, would you be okay with a condition that said uh, no more than 65 or 70%? That's right, that a minimum of 65 or 70% of, um, of the appointments in Needham will be based on uh, scheduled deployments as opposed to walk-ins?
I, I don't know how that number will be enforced, to be honest with you. Um, I, I don't know how we will track that. What I can give you are national averages and what we expect and anticipate based on kind of the location of where the Needham clinic is versus where we put our, you know, kind of downtown clinics. Um, so I, I don't know what, how that clause is going to be enforced or researched, but what I can give you are the averages that we currently have, which is somewhere around 70, usually our appointments, 30 are usually walk-ins.
I mean, I think we could review the, you know, we could review the appointment book. You know, you know, quarterly for, is it now?
How, do we really have the staff to do that, Adam? It's a practical matter. I, I mean, we, we have a lot of enforcement problems as it is. Um, I, I, I see a prob, I, I see an enforcement problem if we had that condition.
Okay.
So, but just, that's just my two cents. Elizabeth, you all set?
Uh, yes, I just urged the board to err on the side of caution with this parking issue because, um, I could see it devolving in a hurry. I mean, the pandemic can spike up at any time and you know how it is. It's been back and forth, the real yo-yo. So, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Elizabeth. We appreciate your comments. Alex, next up, we have Joni Shockett. If you would bring Joni Shockett over, please.
Hi, I'm Joni Shockett from at 174 Evelyn Road. Um, I have a lot of the same concerns that Jill and Elizabeth have, so I won't repeat them. But I have a few other concerns also. They are claiming they want, uh, to be permitted not as a clinic. So if they're not a clinic, there is some kind of a medical facility, facility. Are they a medical practice? What exactly are they trying to do to get this permit? That is of great concern because they act like a clinic, they look like a clinic, urgent care facilities are clinics. Um, walk-ins go into clinics. They also said that their peak traffic is weekdays, not weekends. But in talking to other facilities, um, partners down on, uh, Needham Street um, in Newton, their biggest clientele swell is on the weekends when people cannot access their primary care physicians. My daughter has three little children and she is very grateful for urgent care because they tend to decide to get sick on Saturday mornings. And there's always a mob at these urgent care, care facilities. So I'm very concerned about their rush to get a permit without identifying what they are. And when you talk about professionals, you can't have a, a care team if you're having a, a, um, radiologist or a radiology tech there, then you, that's part of the care team and they are certainly a professional. And you have a physician's assistant and you have a physician. And maybe you have somebody else there. You're running into three or four people. I'm, I, I urge this committee, this, um, planning board to be really careful of this. I see traffic issues. The parking lot is, is a bit of an awkward shape and it isn't conducive to good flow when it's very crowded. Um, parking spaces are at awkward angles. I have grave concerns about their, um, chart about when they are going to be most heavily trafficked. I am concerned about the number of people that they say are professionals. I am concerned about their identity. What exactly are they? And I, I just feel very uncomfortable with this as opposed to something else that isn't trying to grow into every town and city in the state as rapidly as possible. If we, heaven forbid, have another surge of COVID in the winter as we had this past winter, I can see 50, 70, 100 people lining up to get tested there. This could really be a very serious problem. So please think very carefully. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it, Joni. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, next up, I see Artie Crocker. Please bring Artie over. Hi, Artie, how are you?
Hey, good, Paul. Thanks, thanks for having me over. Appreciate it. Yeah, thanks for all the great discussion. So I just wanted to do a little math here.
Artie, Artie, name and address, please.
Uh, sorry about that, man. Artie Crocker, 17 Fairland Street in Needham, Mass. And I just wanted to do a little math, just, just so I have an understanding, that's how many actual offices are going to be in the office? And here's an office, but how many actually rooms to see clinics, to see patients will there be? I mean, this can be, it's gonna be permitted, so how many?
I mean, I remember that we saw that floor plan. Can you refresh our memory, please, as to how many offices there are? You want to run through that again for us?
How many rooms, you mean? I'm, I'm pulling up the floor plans right.
No, how, how many actual rooms to see patients?
Yeah, yeah, that's what you asked. How many rooms? Yeah.
Yeah, part, part, part of the application already, part of the original application was a floor plan.
Sure, no, I can appreciate that, Paul.
And so he's bringing that up so that, so we can answer your question.
Yeah, I mean, my apologies for not, not knowing that.
Don't worry about it. It's quite all right.
Do you have it? I can pull it up. I have it too. I can pull it up.
I, I mean, I'm not sharing my screen, but I have it in front of me. There are seven rooms in the, in the, in the office.
So there are seven treatment rooms in the office?
Someone just grabbed the screen.
Yes, Artie, that's correct.
Okay, so, so just to confirm, so there are seven treatment rooms in the office? Okay, and, and what are the hours of operation? Again, I know there's an hour you take off for lunch, but what are the hours for operation?
9:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Okay, so eight, okay, so 10. So 10 hours, take an hour off, that's nine. Okay, so there are seven offices there, nine, nine hours of operation and you're saying you're gonna see 20 patients a day? Okay, so you're gonna say, so you're, you're telling me you're gonna see two, just over two patients per hour? Is that what we're talking about? So nine, nine, nine hours of operation, 20 patients a day. So you're gonna see just barely over two patients per hour for an office that has seven rooms to see patients?
That is correct. Our average is national, like I said, I, I, I can give you a national average, I can give you master's averages. Our mature clinics are seeing mid twenties a day. That is correct.
I can appreciate that, but for a couple things, eh? Do they have seven offices where they could see seven patients at a time, let's say? I'm not saying that's what's gonna happen, but I guess, I'm, I'm looking, I'm just simply looking at the math. There are seven off, there are seven offices there where patients can be. You're open nine hours in the day, but yet you're only gonna see two. You're open nine hours in the day, but yet you're only gonna see two patients per hour or two plus two patients per hour?
Artie, the other thing is that they're only, we're we're talking about having only two, what we're considering professionals, which includes.
Um. And there is practitioner.
Practitioners and physicians. We're only gonna do those on on premises a day uh at a time. So that cuts down on how many patients can be seen at a time.
But but let's, but let's think about what that means then. So there are two professional or two, however we want to define it, two people there every hour throughout the day.
And and there's other staff.
And yeah, no, no, and there's other staff.
Who who will be seeing patients? You might have a lab technician who's, who who we're not calling a professional, who might be in one of the rooms.
Correct, but the the point, the point being, Paul, that just amplifies it. So let's, let's, let's forget about everyone else. So there are two professionals, not, whatever you wanna call them, there are two people there seeing patients as versions of a doctor. And so they're only gonna see one point one patient per hour.
No, no, so that's, that part is wrong. We. We've talked about, no, we we talked about the ability to see up to two, but I, like I mentioned, we actually staff with one, right? So, you know, we usually have one physician, one medical assistant, one uh support staff, one front desk staff. So usually there is one. We can move up to two. I think I I'm trying to see what you're driving at here, which I think you're trying to say, and correct me if I'm wrong, that seven rooms is a lot of rooms with the volume that we're seeing. Is that, is that what what you're trying to?
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just going by the math. I mean, the business model, I mean, I, I mean, I'm not an expert here, but the business model, whenever, whenever, when any, whenever any of us go to the doctor, the business model is patients are filling the rooms and the doctors are going between the rooms and seeing as many as they reasonably can, but people are in the rooms.
Yeah.
Okay, so there are seven rooms here, even if half of them are empty, even if a third of them are empty. You know, that's two point five, you know, that's two point five. Don't, I mean, that's, that's a lot more than twenty people per day. That's not even the ballpark of twenty people per day. So I don't know, so so the math, the math doesn't work for me. Seven room, seven rooms here with, let's say, one professional, then some tech, then some other people, then sometimes two professionals. That math doesn't work for me. And and I don't see, I don't, I don't see how it could work for anyone.
Yeah.
I'll just be frank first, myself. It it, I don't see, it doesn't work for me. On a business, from a business model standpoint, I don't get it.
So Artie, Artie, are you getting to the parking issue? What you learned about the number?
Sure, sure, sure. Sure, I'm getting to the parking issue. Well, sure, let's, we we can say that. Now, we can say we're getting to the parking issue, but I'm also, well, I'm also getting to whatever you wanna call them, credibility, whatever, I'm not sure what it would call it. I'm sorry, I'm I'm getting, okay, I won't fight, I won't, I won't use that word. I'm getting to seven offices. You're seeing twenty people a day. And then, then, then I I don't get that. I don't understand the math there, it doesn't work. Then, then let's expand length, then then let's expand it, expand it into the parking aspect of it. So let's, let's expand it to the parking aspect. Okay, so we have to deal with that. Then, then if we're talking about the parking aspect, then we're talking about the, you know, the businesses that were there. Um, like, one of them wasn't operational, one of them, I guess I'll use the definition, one was going out of business or failing. I don't know, I don't know why it stopped. And so what part, what are we really doing here? I mean, let me, let me just, let me step back and say, the goal is to get businesses in these buildings. There's the land, you know, that's the goal. We want businesses in the building, because we want businesses to thrive. But we have a neighborhood next door. We want the neighborhood to thrive. We have other businesses already there and we don't wanna screw up the parking completely. And then we have an building that's currently empty that we want some possibility of having a business there without then coming back and say, you know what? We're screwed for the parking, so we're gonna have to override our own parking bylaws because we want something in there because we've screwed ourselves, sorry for the words, but we screwed ourselves over because now we have a business in there. When and it would, it would be great if it's thriving, we want a thriving business. But the math doesn't work for me with several offices. It just doesn't. With twenty patients a day, it makes no sense.
Do you, do you mind if I, I can, I can speak to that, actually? I think one thing I wanna make clear is that I felt the the job about the credibility, I actually took that a little personally because I I stand nothing to gain from lying to you here, right? There's, there's, there's no benefit in lying here, there's no benefit in making up information. I started by saying that our national average for our mature clinics are in the mid twenties a day. I worked in the Boston clinic last week. In that clinic, we have five rooms. We did not use three of the rooms when I was there all day Thursday. I saw eighteen patients in that clinic on Thursday. We didn't use three of the rooms. We got to this location, we got a bigger location, right? We're able to secure a bigger lease and so we divvy up the rooms to our standard room size and it turns out that we have seven rooms there. I am not, you also have to understand that the clinics don't always run a hundred percent capacity. Now, if you're saying that you're concerned about the parking, I think that that is a legitimate concern. But the underlying tone that we're making up information and like not being credible because we have seven rooms. If you want us to pull up the books, we're seeing an average of mid twenties in our, in our, in our standard clinics and that information is true, true, tested and true, you know? But the, the idea that we might not be being credible here, I take that actually relatively personally.
Eliminate, find, eliminate the word credit, correct, eliminate that word, that's fine. The math, the math is still the math. You're open nine hours a day, not counting the lunch, nine hours a day. And you're saying, and then we're saying twenty patients in those nine hours, which is just barely past two patients an hour.
But but businesses don't always run at hundred percent capacity, right? This is why businesses.
That's, that's, that's a fraction of capacity. That's a fraction.
It is a fraction of capacity. That is absolutely correct, right? We're not. I don't know what.
I'd like to add something. I guess what Artie's trying to say is that although you're only, you only have two people and you're probably practicing in the way that you're saying, that you have the capacity to increase that. And 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 that that is troubling in the sense of the amount of parking and the amount of people coming in. I think that's already what you were trying to say, maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah. Thank you for just for putting a little bit more mi- mildly.
Yeah, that's, and I, and like I said, that that assumption is fair, right? You can, that is fair to assume, but to say that the twenty doesn't add up to make a sense that we're not being credible, I can only provide the information that we have to say.
Right.
We happen to have a larger facility here. As a result of the fact that we're able to get these two spaces, we combine them and we happen to have seven rooms. We, I was just in Boston where we have five rooms and we've not used three of the rooms when I worked there last week. So the fact that we have that capacity does not mean that we're pushing to fill it now. Does it bring up a concern? That is absolutely correct. There is that concern, but what I can tell you is that mature clinics are moving in the mid twenties and that, and that is.
So just so I, just so I understand, because I, I, I think already what you're getting at is if you have, let's say, an average of five staff, it doesn't sound like you're gonna start with that, but let's say you average five staff a day, that's five parking spaces, I think. Uh, Miss, Mr. Kefter, you mentioned that there'd be a parking demand of about sixteen parking spaces in total. So I I think uh that's the the peak parking demand. So we're talking about eleven parking spaces. If, if I understand correctly, you saw thirty patients over the course of the day, not the twenty, but the thirty patients. And every single one of those people um uh drove, you've got, you've got thirty people over nine hours. That's roughly three, that is three point three uh additional cars plus the five for the staff. You're dealing with about eight or nine parking spaces taken of the, of the sixteen spaces that would have uh um of the peak demand. In other words, it seems to me like even at thirty patients a day, you know, throughout the nine hours, because you're not seeing patients during the lunch hour, that there's still, you know, almost fifty percent capacity for parking.
Thank you, Adam. And I, and that was gonna be my next point. I think we have assumed that sixteen is that number, right? It, the, the, the odds that we will hit sixteen is slim to none, right? There is, it is hard to believe that we will have a clinic full of, with four to five staff members and all of a sudden also have eleven patients visiting at the same particular time, right? We will not have medical offices that run in that way. And so, um, yeah, I have no further comments on that.
Yeah, you gotta remember, Artie, we're talking, we're talking averages.
Oh, I know, no, no, I get it. No, no, I totally.
You might have an hour, you might have an hour where you've got five patients sitting in there and you might have a couple of hours where there's one or two patients.
I I try, I totally get it. I just, I just like the math to work and the math wasn't working, that's all, as far as the patient, total patients. The other question, the other question I have is this, I mean, obviously related to concern as far as future parking when the other business has something in it. But the other question I have is this, we were talking about how many professionals in the, in the office. Then there was something brought up about trainees being in there. I think, I think we need a little better definition of trainee. How, you know, what is the definition of a trainee? How many hours, how many days, how many months? What's the definition of a trainee?
Why is that, Artie? Why? Why does it?
I can give that answer straightforward. When I was referring to the people that we're training, when we occasionally have new staff members, our current practice is to have them there to train for three to five days of training. So it is possible that someone, for example, when we have the Needham office, if the next office to open is the Framingham office, I might have one of the Framingham docs or one of the Framingham NPs come with me to Needham for three to five days to learn at the office how we operate. So we're not thinking about, as far as med students or, you know, those kinds of trainees, we're thinking about when we onboard and train our new uh staff.
Yeah, I know, I can appreciate the need for that. I just wanted to, would be, the reason that was brought up in the first place is because I believe Adam, you had brought up something about um more, more professionals in the office. I think, I thought you brought it up, Adam, but more someone else in the office. Then there was something, comment about, well, what, or no, perhaps, doctor, you might have brought this up, but what about, what about a trainee? And then, then that was brought up, so it's the allowance of a trainee and spr- perhaps something in there about a trainee being in there. And so I just wanted a little bit of clarity of what that actually is going to mean. And the only, the only, so I appreciate that. The only other comment I think I have is that I agree with some of the earlier comments from Jill as far as I don't see the harm in understanding of what the definition, what the definition by the state that this is. Now, the fact remains is I don't pers- I don't necessarily have a problem with the fact that it's called a clinic. I, uh, Gene, I believe you said, you know, perhaps we need to relook at that. I don't necessarily have a problem. I, I have a problem with the, how, the problem, how busy the parking lot could be and impact on the neighborhoods. Um, but the clinic aspect, I don't necessarily have a problem with, though I do understand that, you know, children's hospital is gonna be half-serving a certain business that does not interfere, does not, does not overlap with some of the Glover business. So we have the spokes of our hospital care, of our, our medical care, our spokes are not interfering with each other. And so the clinical aspect was written in there, some, some relationship to those spokes and how they are not interfering with each other.
Um, okay.
But I don't see anything wrong with it. I'm sorry.
I hate to cut you short, but I'm looking at the time and we've been on the counter now for two hours.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, and we have more hands raised and I'm.
Thank you.
I really hate to do this because I let people talk, but, you know, we've got at least, we have two more people with hands raised. I wouldn't be surprised if we get more.
That's fine, Paul, I just, I just. Get the definition of it.
I'm not just talking to you, Artie, I'm talking to the next people also.
I get it, thank you, Paul.
I have to impose a time limit now.
Thank you, Paul, appreciate it.
The comments. So, thank you, Artie, and um let's bring over John Negotian, please.
Hello?
Hi, John, please state your name and address again and I, and I apologize, but we've been at this for two hours and I'm gonna have to ask you to try to keep it quick.
Okay, I I only have a few questions. John Negotian, South Street, Needham, Mass. I have a few questions. Uh, could, can I just ask them and you can answer them real quick?
Sure. How many, how many do you have?
Uh, like, three or four.
Okay.
Sure. With two, this is for the doctor or the board, actually. So with two professionals, does that mean working there all the time? Does that mean that the doctor can't come and work for the day because that would put him over the limit of three? So the doctor won't ever be coming there to work, correct?
Well, the doctor would be, would probably be one of the two. Sometimes. That there, there, there would be one doctor and one other person who would be, who would be considered a professional by the definition.
Okay, well, he had said he, he floats around.
Right. But, and so, and so he would only be able to be there when there was only one other professional there at the time.
Right, okay.
Yeah, that's a scheduling issue.
Okay, and this is for Wayne. Were your calculations done uh on the premises that it was twenty people visiting a day? Is that what we are packing? Was that based on their figuring they only had twenty people coming a day? So my, I mean, um, cuz that Mr. Crocker brought up some pretty good points.
Sure, so I, I probably went over this too quickly when I was talking, but there's, there's two criteria that are available in the, in that IT Parking Generation manual. One criteria is gross square footage and the other one is per employee. There isn't a criteria that is for kind of everyone in the building, if that makes sense. And so we chose gross square footage, which, which comes out to, to the peak demand of sixteen vehicles because that was more conservative than the per employee. So the per employee um number was like point eight spaces per, per employee or something like that. So it would have been like five or six spaces versus the sixteen.
Okay, so there could be a lot more spaces being used then, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is the gross square footage were taken into account that, that expected kind of patient load, so to speak.
Okay, so if there was another epidemic and shot four comes around this fall and there's a line out there, like there is in Needham Heights every day, the, those parking numbers that you gave wouldn't be correct. That's a question to you.
That's probably true, but I I guess I would say that there, there is, you could say that for the, for the last two years, that there's been no one who's anticipated anything like that. So there'd be no way to, to plan for that. I mean, the alternative would, would be to, would almost be the parking mall, the, the mall concept, where you have acres and acres of parking that are empty all the time because you're planning for the worst case scenario and and most cities and towns don't want that.
Okay. All right, how about, how many extra spaces are there available for the website after this? How many spaces would be available for the website?
I don't understand the question. How does a website generate spaces?
Well, it's empty right now, but when, how many?
FW web.
Yeah, the FW website.
Website, right.
Sure, so, so that, that's somewhat dependent on when those, when the peak demand for whatever use goes in there is. Um, if it was consistent with the peak demand of the uses onsite, there would be seven available on a weekday. And then again, this is just a peak hour that we're talking about now. It's not like there's seven available all day, that's seven, the worst case would be seven. And then on weekend, it would be um twenty-five.
John, we discussed, we discussed the fact that because according to Wayne's calculations, the peak could have, as you know, anticipated eighty-nine spaces being used out of the ninety-six that are there, that when we have a tenant coming to us for the FW website, we may very well have a parking problem in our ability to permit that, that use to go in there. A lot of, from what I was hearing from Wayne's presentation, a lot of it has to do with what are the peak hours of the use that is in the particular buildings? And if the FW website has a use where the peak hours are different than the peak hours of the clinic, that, that makes it a lot, a lot easier to say, okay, we're gonna have plenty of parking for them. But if their peak hours are the same as the clinic, that's gonna be a problem for that tenant when they're in front of us if the clinic is approved. We haven't approved the clinic yet. But you, you know, that's, that's something that um could very well be a problem in the future when a tenant is, is found for the FW website. when a tenant is, is found for the FW website. And we recognize that and we've put that in the record.
Yeah, well, the FW website closed early and there was never anything going on there at night, so it was actually pretty nice for the, for the residents, the abutters. And it, it, it seems like this clinic is open till seven o'clock at night. So if that wave is anywhere, it would be after that, which we don't really, we don't wanna hear. Also, if, if this is approved, I, I know what it's like to drive through the heights every day and see the line at ten o'clock in the morning, trying to get into that clinic. The, the, uh, that, that clinic. Is, is it possible you could put trash cans out in the parking lot so the people can use them? There's no trash cans in the parking lot now. And if there's a line of twenty people out there and they're drinking a cup of coffee or whatever, I mean, I think it should be a prerequisite anyways. There's, there's no trash cans in the parking lot.
We'll make a note of that. You, you know, we, we, we can't lose parking spaces because of having trash.
There's plenty of sidewalk to walk on, on over there, you know what I mean? There's plenty of sidewalk. They come, someone comes out of someplace and, 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 and that's probably why there's trash on the, on the ground. It, it, you know, a facility that big, it, it should have it, you know what I mean? I mean, Staples Place has one.
Well, is it in the parking lot or is it on the sidewalk at the entrance to the location?
The sidewalk at the location.
Right, yeah, no, that makes sense.
Right.
That makes sense to have, have trash. And there were trash cans, I believe there were trash cans in front of Panera Bread.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I believe, I believe that to be true as well.
Yeah.
I, I haven't seen it there. Maybe they bring it out every morning and bring it back in, but I'm not aware of a trash can there.
I think I've noticed it.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I knew another hand would come up since I last looked. Janice Epstein, Alex, we bring Janice Epstein over, please. Hi, Janice.
Hi.
Again, name and address, please.
Uh, Janice Epstein, seventy-five Highland Terrace. I'm a town meeting member J. I'll be quick. I have a question for the doctor. I think when it was sort of asked earlier, I didn't really hear a, a good reply. But when you opened the Sumner Street, Boston location, did you, what, did you have to go in front of any boards before you needed to open?
No, we did not.
So you didn't go through the state or any boards? You just opened?
Not to my knowledge.
And is that the same in the Dedham location?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, I, I think, cuz um, someone had said earlier, well, if they had already done what they needed to on the other two locations and why are we relooking at it? Well, here, here's the answer. They didn't go through a board or the state. And I do wanna also say that I agree with Joni's comments that it's the weekends that are more, that these kind of clinics are busier cuz that's when you don't get to see your PCP and things aren't open and you need services. Thank you. I know it's late.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Janice. Appreciate it. We have one more hand raised at the moment. David Ruska. I hope I pronounced your name correctly. If I didn't, please correct me.
Good evening. It's David Ruska.
Thank you.
Twenty-one Rosemary Street. I just wanted to very briefly offer another perspective for the board to consider. There's been a lot of talk about parking and traffic and impact. And traffic is generated when people drive places and when they park. The best thing you can do to reduce traffic, to reduce impact, is to reduce parking. The more parking you have, the more people are gonna drive. If you keep the parking minimal, if there's not enough, people aren't going to go there. They're going to realize it's not a good place to go if they wanna drive and they won't go there and the market will solve the problem and you'll reach a happy equilibrium. And honestly, it, it should be an issue between a business and the tenants and the landlords and the customers as to what the parking model is. And I see absolutely no problem if a business thinks that the parking is sufficient, let them, let them try. And if they're wrong, the worst thing that will happen is the parking lot will be full and nobody else will go there. Thank you for your consideration.
Actually, I just, the problem we have here, David, is that this, this property borders residential neighborhood. And the problem that the residents have is that parking, when the parking lot is full and this parking lot is, you know, there's only so much space on this lot and then it's Second Avenue and there's no place else to put, you, you can't expand this parking lot. We've got ninety-six spaces, not gonna be able to expand it. And if people can't find a space, they're gonna park, or, or the, the fear is, or the or, or the experience is that when people can't find a space in this lot, they park on the residential street and then walk over. And that's a problem. That's a.
I, I'd like to, I'd, I'd like to challenge that.
And this board has.
I don't think.
Residential street.
I don't own the street in front of my house. People park there all the time.
I know.
Also, if the, if that is a problem, the town could implement regulations about who's allowed to park in what area.
I know, I know, and, you know, and, 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 and we're trying, we're trying to do things so that the neighbors don't have that problem. That's what I'm just trying to, you know, it's, it's, it's not as easy as just saying if the parking lot's full, people, people aren't gonna drive there. If the parking lot's full, they're gonna go there and they're gonna park on the street.
And once the streets are full, then people stop driving there.
Yeah, take a look at Second Avenue and see how long it's gonna take to fill Second Avenue.
I mean, walk a mile, right? If they walk a mile, they might not drive at all.
Walk a mile, they got good exercise.
We need to rethink how we're looking at parking. I think, I think we do a tremendous disservice when we plan everything around parking, around driving. And what we get is what we have, which is a lot of traffic, a lot of pollution, a lot of aggravation. And if we planned for less driving, we'd have less of a problem.
What you're describing is what wall fam does. And I'm not, I'm not opposed to what you're describing either. I think it works in wall fam.
Thank you, David. We appreciate your comments. Yes, Mike, go right ahead.
So I, I just wanted to respond to your comment about people parking on Highland Terrace. I mean, first of all, I, I, I have not been notified of any of that. And the times that I've been there, I've never seen a car parked on the beginning of Highland Terrace. And when this was first permitted, we put up three no parking signs. No parking between, I don't know what it says, eight and five or nine and five. One sign has disappeared, but there are still, still two signs there and I, I just don't think people park there and, and walk around. I think when the parking lot is full, when that occasionally happens, people just leave the parking lot. Just my opinion.
Thank you. Again, there are no more hands raised. So what's our next step here? I think, since we're asking for an opinion of council on some questions and Lee, I hope you have what it is that we're asking of council. We're gonna have to continue the hearing to April twelfth. What time is our April twelfth meeting?
Ten thirty.
Well, April twelfth, but April twelfth was a special meeting. We were going to hold to actually vote the decision on this after we closed the hearing. So I don't think that we're, we, we need that meeting on April the twelfth. I think we're looking for a date to continue this public hearing too. And there are, so the meeting that we have, I think the next avail, I think the meeting on the nineteenth is booked. So it would need to be May the third at seven thirty.
Mr. Chair, is there any way that that can be accelerated? That's, it's another month.
The issue I have is that the nineteenth already has, I think Natasha, you're away on the nineteenth. So that's, that's a problem with the nineteenth.
So, right, if tonight, the nineteenth, Natasha won't be there and Marty will be off the board. And April twelve, again, I'm not quite sure I followed the. We, April twelfth was a special meeting just for the purpose of anticipation of closing this hearing tonight. We were going to vote and issue the decision while Marty was still on the board. Because as of, as of eight PM, April twelfth, Marty's not gonna be on the board. Is it correct, Marty, or is it not gonna be?
No, is it touch time? Is my successor sworn in? I don't know.
Whichever. That's another question for town council, Mike.
I know. I don't know the answer.
And so May third is the next scheduled meeting when we could do.
Well, can we can we close the hearing? Would this, but, but with the sole exception of getting a written response to our questions from town council before the April twelfth meeting. And that will be the only item of evidence that will be allowed before we, before we vote and and issue the decision.
Does Lee have enough information to go ahead and draft it?
She can do a first draft, you know, and this is another question for town council, which is that if we, let me, let me finish my thought, Lee, please. If we vote the decision, but you're not able to make the changes to the decision based on our discussion on the twelfth, can Marty still sign the decision? I don't see why not, because we actually discussed the decision. We voted the decision. It's just a ministerial function of, of putting down on paper what, what, what we discuss and vote on the twelfth.
I'm having diff, I'm having difficulty knowing what I'm drafting in a decision. The conditions, the conditions you want imposed. I, I, you know, I, I, I'm having, I'm having difficulty with that. Of putting together a draft decision and knowing what you want in that decision with these issues open and all the questions on the table.
Well, I, 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 I guess this is an additional, but if we close the hearing, if we close the hearing, it doesn't help. You, you know, it, it's a, it, it's kind of a question for town council, which, which is that if we give you all those criteria on the twelfth, can Marty still vote and sign the decision? Even though he's off the board after the twelfth, but he's been. He, he's taken part in the discussions. He's, he's been part of the vote on the twelfth.
What if this is a solution? What if on this set, on the seventh, but by the seventh, we have information from town council? I, we continue the hearing to that date. And then I we, and then we meet, and then we meet on the seventh.
We can't meet on the seventh because it, today's the fifth. You have to post a meeting forty-eight hours before. The earliest we could do it probably would be the ninth. Is that a, is that a weekday?
Yeah, weekend.
That's a weekend. Yes.
If the, if the primary question for, for town council is the definition of professional in our bylaw and we're already contemplating writing a decision that limits the number of professionals who can comprise this practice and treat patients to two. I wonder if the decision, if we could start drafting that decision on the assumption that town council is going to agree with the fact that we, that don't, there can only be two professionals and so therefore our decision should limit it that way.
To be more, to be more clear, I don't, unless my colleagues feel differently, I think the solution to the question of professional is, is achieved by this condition, which, which says something to the effect that, that carbon health agrees that, or carbon health shall not have more at any one time other than for a, a short training period, whatever that language is. For training will not have more than any two of the following A, B, and C period. So that removes the, that removes, I think, the question about the definition of professional. And it certainly satisfies, you know, what we, I think what we were dealing with. And then it's really.
No, let me, let, let me suggest this. And I asked the other two lawyers if that, if it works for them. We have a condition that says there will no, there will not be more than two professionals.
No, I'm not saying.
At the location at any one time, two, two professionals as defined in our bylaws.
That's, that's, we've already had the, the building commissioner identify that.
No, because, because then we're gonna ask town council for his opinion.
No, I, what I'm saying is I don't think that that's needed. And because the question about whether a nurse practitioner and a physician's assistant is regarded as a professional, is otherwise satisfied by saying that there will not be any more than two of the three following people. Regardless however it's defined, that satisfied that original question. The outstanding question that I see.
So you wanted to find it, you want, you wanted to find it for purposes of this, of, of this.
Of this decision.
Yes.
And then specifically, I, I think the question really for town council is limited to, and I don't have it up in front of me. The, the opinion, what was the name of that law firm, Rick?
Ole Follion Lardner, whether, whether he concurs with their fundamental decision or.
Most particularly what is, what is, what is inferred by, what is reasonably inferred by practitioners so associated. That to me is, is, is the, the question. Because, because if, if town council comes back and says practitioner is so associated, suggests that that, the, that the owner doctor ought to be the one overseeing, overseeing the direct patient care. Then I, then I, then it's possible that this application doesn't work. And, and may therefore require a special direction from Borum. Which, Rick, I think it's Borum cuz they're the group that licenses doctors as opposed to the Department of Health, but having said.
It is, it is EPH that issues the clinic license, just to be, to be clear, but I understand why you're.
And Adam, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Why you care so much about this? Are you concerned about quality of care? Do you think the, the, the answer to that question has anything to do with the quality of care that's gonna take place on this site?
I, it's more about the the technical implication of the business model.
But why do we care about that? I mean, isn't all the risk gonna be on the tenant and the landlord here?
So then would that be?
The state decides, yes, they should be licensed. They'll have to get, or they'll go out of business. Why do we care? As long, you know, I care that they're licensed to practice their profession, whether it's a doctor or a nurse practitioner or a PA, whatever it is. As long as they're licensed to do that, quality of care is assured. Whether they need to be licensed as a medical clinic, I'm not sure I care.
Um, well, excuse me, I thought the concern was medical clinics are expressly excluded. It cannot be located here if it's a medical clinic. It cannot be located here if it's a medical clinic, and we're just trying to comply with our bylaw, is that?
Only if it's a medical clinic that requires licensure by the state, and that's the issue we've been discussing. It, the exemption takes it out from under that provision.
But to Marty's point, why do we care? I guess because Marty, is it a violation of our zoning? And you're saying if it is, then it's, uh, then that has to be cured by, by the tenant, by the landlord and tenant.
Absolutely, and we're gonna have language in our permit, our standard language that we always have, that if something in here turns out to be not true.
Or a violation.
They're in violation, we can pull the permit.
We could make it express that, uh, this is never to be used as a medical clinic.
Right.
Pretty clear.
Yeah.
Well, unless, unless the, well, I guess unless the bylaw has changed, but yeah. Contrary to the provisions of the bylaw, yeah.
Yeah, and then we don't need town council's opinion for anything.
Sounds like we're going in that direction is then that we can draft an opinion um, that limits the, uh, professionals to two as required in our bylaw and provides expressly that, uh, um, this is never to be operated as a medical clinic, uh, uh.
As defined in our bylaw, because medical clinic is a fine.
Yeah, as, uh, if, if, if same is prohibited in our bylaw or something.
Yeah.
Prohibited in our bylaw, yeah.
On the first point, Jean, we say for the perp, for the perp, herein professional means doctors, nurse practitioner and P A.
Yes. We make that express.
Right. No matter what the, our building inspector says, that's what, that's what we're saying for the purpose of this opinion.
Yes, right.
Okay, refresh my memory, what does P A stand for again?
Decision resistant.
Lead, is that, is that clear when we lay it out like that?
I, I think it is. If you're asking me.
Didn't ask you, Ricky, ask Lee.
He's gonna have to be after it, it needs to be clear to her.
So we're, we're not getting a legal opinion, we're liming it to two professionals, and we're defining professional under our own terms, is that what you're asking for?
That's what it sounds like.
Right.
And then you're basically putting all the kinds of standard operational conditions you put in, in a decision in terms of their representations, the number of people that are gonna be there, number of, of exam rooms, um, hours of operation. Um, and a condition that basically says nothing goes in the web, the web building. Um, uh, without an amendment to this permit, demonstrating that the parking works on the property.
I like that wording, that works for me. So we'll see everybody on the twelfth at ten, well, ten o'clock, ten thirty?
I, well, I, I'm. Mister Chair, I, I thought you were leading towards a, is that? And then on the twelfth, you would then adopt the decision, is that, that I misconstrued?
No, on the twelfth, we would discuss the decision and take our vote. I'm not gonna promise that we're gonna adopt it because we're gonna have to take our vote, but that's when we're gonna make a decision, that's when we're gonna make a decision.
Where you were headed.
But we're in a position now to close the hearing, is that correct?
No.
Well, Natasha, do you have any outstanding comments or questions? Are you satisfied as well?
Yeah, I think we keep on going in circles, but now I think we have a solution hopefully, so, no, I don't have any more comments.
Okay, can I have a motion to close the here?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Jean McKnight?
Hi.
Marty Jacobs?
Hi.
Adam Block?
Hi.
Natasha Spada?
Hi.
Chair votes aye, the hearing is closed, we're gonna have a special meeting that will be legally posted for um, for, is it a Friday, Friday the twelfth?
Tuesday the twelfth.
That's right, it's election day, the Tuesday the twelfth, and, uh, what time?
Ten thirty.
I'm sorry?
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty.
At, at ten thirty, is that, is that what's in?
Yeah.
Thirty in the daytime or nighttime?
Marty may not be on the board anymore.
Right.
A M. Thank you all very much. You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we still have an agenda. Farmer's Market, item four. Reviewing the, we've, yeah, we handled nine fifty-two Great Plain Avenue. And so the next item on the agenda is Needham Farmer's Market. Is.
Take a five minute break?
Oh, I'd like to plow through, I'd, I'd like to get. I'd like to, I think we can handle Farmer's Market fairly quickly, I would hope.
Yeah, I hope so too.
Adam, do you need?
Go to eleven thirty again, or twelve.
Eight to five minutes, Adam?
Well, I, I, I can say this, I don't have any comments for, about the farmer's market. So if we can, you know, wrap that up, then I can wait, but thereafter, I'd like a couple of minutes, yes, please.
Yeah, cuz Jeff.
The farmer's market, the, the, the parties in good, has been waiting a long time on the farmer's market, let's.
Alex, if you would bring Jeff Friedman over and, um, and Lisa. Lisa Chabulias. Bring her over too. I think that's it. Can, can I just have my memory refreshed on where this stands right now? Uh, we have a decision in front of us.
Have we?
What's that?
Have we closed the hearing?
Yes, you have, you have closed the hearing, you have voted the decision as it's in front of you now. Um, after Jeff was not able to speak when you took the vote on the decision. And he contacted me and raised a concern with one of the conditions that was included in the decision. So you would need to vote to amend the decision that you had already issued on this property.
And that relates to the sixteen versus eighteen?
That relates to that one condition that deals with, yes, sixteen of the eighteen vendors, um, being required to sell food related products.
So before, before we get to that issue, which I know Jeff wants to talk about, let me just, um, say that I raised an issue with Lee and Alex. And I think the only person here probably other than Jeff who will remember this is Jean. When we first started with the farmer's market, um, Jeff and whoever was helping Jeff, if anyone, set forth some proposed definition for the term farmer's market and set forth some language for the proposed use category for farmer's market. And if you look at page twenty of our zoning bylaw, the very first use category is for farmer's market. And it says farmer's market not to exceed once a week during the season from May fifteenth to November thirty, which may take place on existing parking areas serving one of the following uses. So the very first venue that was applied for was the church lawn on the corner of Denham Ave. And I raised the question of how is that an existing parking? How is that an existing parking area? I voted against it because it's not, it wasn't an existing parking area.
Hmm.
Others voted for it and it passed, which I still scratching my head over, I don't get it. I never understood why the word existing, words existing parking areas are in that phrase, I have no idea, but Jeff will have to explain why he included that language. I didn't, was never my idea, but it is in there and it's been in there the whole time. That's why I voted against it when it was on the church lawn, which as far as I know, was never an existing parking area. Marty, may I ask a question since I wasn't there? Let me just, let me just finish, okay? It, in successive years, it moved to Garrity's Way, which I think at least largely is a parking area, an existing parking area, so I never objected to those. Now he wants to, he wants to take it to Greens Field, which is not an existing parking area. So I think it takes it out of this use category and I don't know why this passed when it was on the church's front lawn. I heard it, I heard it argued that, well, it says may take place on existing parking areas. And that wasn't to be exclusive. And I think that's what Bruce Eisenhut was trying to argue at the time.
See, yeah.
But the problem with that, of course, is it flies completely in the face of one of the basic requirements in one point two, second sentence. Any use not specifically or generically enumerated in a district herein shall be deemed prohibited. So it just doesn't work, so I forgot about that issue, frankly, until yesterday. I, I was reminded that that's the problem with having it on a lawn area, not an existing parking area. Okay, can I speak to this? I, I, I'd rather that you not, so that we have a discussion on this, cuz I have some thoughts. Let me just finish, so, um, I asked Lee and Alex to alert Jeff, cuz I didn't wanna surprise him with this, um, as, to please explain how this area is an existing parking area. And I see that Lee sent out by email Jeff's response, which merely was it, was it Jeff's response? I'm not, I'm not sure where I saw it, but, um, I think Jeff said basically uh, this was resolved by Bruce back when we were dealing with the church, and therefore that's precedent for this. And you can't say anything. Well, I voted against it when it was on the church lawn. And, um, if I had remembered, I would have voted against it now. That's my entire spiel, except for one thing. What makes this to me a little different is that the farmer's market this year is really being forced to move from what I believe is an existing parking space. Ex- existing parking area in front of Town Hall. It's only tech, the need to redo the town common that's forcing this move. And so I feel as though this is sort of a special case, and I, I really I probably could go along with it, but I want it to be known and I wanna be heard and put it on the record that the, the use category requires it to be in an existing parking area, and that's certainly not what Greens Field is. The last thing I'll say is, the way to remedy this for future time periods, it seems to me, is take those words out of the use category definition, they shouldn't be in there in the first place. That's my entire, that's everything I wanted to say, thank you. Okay, so.
We, can you make a note of that?
Marty Jacobs, but I'm gonna disagree with Marty Jacobs.
Go ahead.
Because I, in my forty-seven years of practicing law, I can't contemplate how much time I have spent over the years, and it's been an incredible amount of time deciding whether to use the word may or shall in drafting something. It does not say, and it could have said, it does not say what shall take place on an existing parking area.
That's what Bruce argued.
Amazing.
That's what Bruce argued.
And I.
He ignored one point two, the second sentence, that's the problem.
Well, uh, any use not.
One, one point two, where, where is that?
Second sentence of one point.
Not specifically or generically enumerated shall be deemed prohibited.
Right.
I, I, I don't.
I don't see, can you explain to me?
I don't, I don't, I don't see where that sentence is, is germane, Marty, but I, I'd have to think about it, it's the first, you know, that wasn't in your email, so I didn't look at it before tonight, but I did look at, you, you know, page twenty. And I, my, my immediate thought was, they could have drafted it to say shall instead of may, but they didn't, they put in may.
They didn't have to, because one point two second sentence says, that's what it says. If it's not specifically enumerated, it's prohibited.
But the uses, the uses farmer's market, that's got nothing to do with location.
The, that's, that's.
The language that you're talking about is, is the location where it's permitted. And, um, uh, I can understand where, where at the time, way back when they were concerned about whether or not they'd be able to use a municipal parking lot, which my recollection is that at one time they did have it in the Chapel Street Parking Lot. Um, or if the church allowed them to use their parking lot.
Here's my, here's my bottom line, so we can save time, cuz it's late. In the end, because of sort of the urgency of this caused by the town's own requirements to dig up the area where they wanna have their farmer's market. I'm willing to go along with it this, this year at Greensfield, even though it doesn't really work, according to my reading, that's my bottom line.
Jean, you wanna say something else?
Yes, um, I wanna thank Marty for raising this issue, um, I noticed it myself, recent, just recently uh, when, uh, Jeff Friedman, um, said, look at the, um, it's an express use, and so I went to the bylaw and looked at it, and I said, wait a minute, what about the parking lot? Um, but I, I agree with Paul, and I agree with Bruce's original interpretation. And also I think it is expressly allowed, you just take all the words after the word may in that clause and disregard them. And you have an expressly allowed use. Farmer's market not to exceed once a week during the season from May fifteen to New, November thirtieth, provided that the special permanent authority determines, et cetera, et cetera, that's the use. Okay, so I'm, I'm content with this, but I'm very happy the issue was raised and resolved and not simply ignored.
Okay, now Jeff, on the issue of the sixteen food vendors.
Okay.
My recollection is that it was represented to us at some point, and I asked if they, if it was in writing, and it's not in writing. So it must have been somewhere during the testimony, but my recollection is that it was represented to us that there would be sixteen food vendors out of the eighteen, and so that's where we got the number and put it in. We have a tendency in this board to take what people ask for, and what they represent is going to happen, and we put it into our conditions. Because we hold people to their word. I understand your argument that says the farmer's market is something that is predominantly food vendors. So I looked up the, I looked up the dictionary definition of predominantly, and it didn't help me. So Jeff, I, I'm gonna ask you, what percentage do you think is predominantly? What number can we put in here? Because I don't wanna have an argument somewhere down the road as to whether predominantly with eighteen spaces, whether predominantly is ten spaces, which is just fifty percent, or twelve spaces, or sixteen spaces. What number are you comfortable with as predominantly?
Can, can I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, first of all, uh, I wanna thank Marty for agreeing that, uh, we can go to, uh, Greensfield this year, and I do hope that there's any ambiguity, ambiguity or whatever, that can be corrected later on. But, uh, at the time, um, there was a difference of a views, opinions on the word may. And, um, the rest is history, it may well be that town council was, uh, involved with this decision. But, uh, the, at the time, one of the realities was that no parking area was available to us. I can tell you that I was told by the town that it would not provide any parking area or any land, nothing. I got a telephone call. There was suggested that I tried to get a park, the parking area across, on Chestnut, across from the hospital. There's a, a small little park, parking area there for the hospital staff. That turned out not to be available. Adam? Yeah, I just.
Yeah, I just, I, I understand what you're saying and yet, given the hour, I don't know that we should rehash.
Okay.
You know, the history, I just want to stick to the germane issue that I think that Paul asked, so we can move this forward.
All right. Well, first of all, I want to explain there's in terms of the six, the number sixteen. And I think that, that there was some confusion about that. First of all, if you look on the license agreement, one B, you'll see that the maximum eighteen vendors use booths, tables, canopies, other temporary structures on the licensed area. In addition, the vendor shall be allowed up to nine tables, booths, canopies for et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, including artists and musicians.
Right.
Now, if you look at the map, do you have the map there to look at?
Not.
Okay, well, okay, so the map indicates two, two, uh, produce vendors, one meat egg truck. We're not certain we're going to get that now, as it turns out. Uh, and thirteen food vendors. That would make a total of sixteen. Now, that number was determined basically in part by the, the map. That was all we could.
Jeff, would it help for me to put up the map? I have it here. Or you just want to keep it short.
You can't, no, you can't.
I want to come up, I want to come up with a number.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
No, there's a problem with that, Paul, but just, I'm just trying to explain how the number sixteen came up. So the thirteen food vendors, well, you know, I, I think I mentioned this to Jean at one point. You know, we're not going to be able to get thirteen food vendors. In the ten years that we've been in existence, we've never had more than a total, a total uh, uh, on one, at one market of thirteen vendors. So if you look at the language there, um, of the suggested bylaw there. Um, or the, from the, I'm trying to pull up the of language here, it's an impossibility. It says here, at least sixteen food vendors shall sell produce and other food for booths, tables and other structures. That's an impossibility. We've never had, and I've talked to Lisa about this.
Jeff, we're conceding that.
Okay.
Give me a number that you're comfortable with.
All right, I'm going to.
We had, we had, we've had prior decisions.
Okay, I, I understand.
Understand, we've had prior decisions where we've defined it as eighty percent. And I understand, and I understand where you think that eighty percent is too high. That's fine. Let's see if we can find a percentage or a number that we're both comfortable with.
Okay. If I could, just, I'm looking for something here. Let me see if I can find it. All these papers here, um.
I wonder if I could make a quick suggestion. I, I've, I've been thinking about this because Jeff did send me an email and I didn't want to get into a communication, but I understand his concerns. I, I want to throw out this idea. Suppose we simply said not more than three booths for the sale of arts and crafts or whatever words we want to use to you know, about the other things other than the food. Um, and I realized that it can be baking, baked goods, that's food, et cetera. Um, soap, that's especially mentioned as possible food type farmer product, but three arts and crafts. That way, if all they get is five food vendors, they're not in violation. There may be weeks where they only have five food vendors.
What if they don't have?
Have sixteen. So if we just limit the number of arts and.
Marty just asked the right question. What if?
Take care of it.
No, what if they only have two food vendors, but they've got three arts and crafts? Is that predominantly food?
Who cares?
Well, that's a good question.
Okay, can I, can I, I'd like to raise.
I won't say anything more about it.
Okay, but I just want to, in terms of what Paul's talking about. So what I've indicated in my letter to Lee, it's attached, uh, addressed to Lee. But I'm sure that you probably have it. It's May, uh, April fourth. And in this, I say that, um, okay, so attaches the farmer's market zoning, et cetera. Then I go on. And then I said, uh, the planning board would be required to first amend the bylaw with the two numerical requirements or tests, the eighty percent vendor requirement or the minimum sixty vendor requirement before the board includes either in the special permit decision. Both are conclusive presumptions, sometimes calls irrevocable presumptions. This issue has gone up to the United States Supreme Court.
Jeff, we're trying, we're trying, please stop arguing. We're trying to accommodate you.
Right.
Okay. You want to say two thirds? I don't, I don't recall seeing eighty percent in the bylaw. I understand the eighty percent was in prior decisions.
That's correct.
What's in the bylaw is predominantly. Okay.
Why don't we, can I tell, ask you what's wrong with the language which I suggested? The, okay, the decisions actually by the SJC on the word predominantly are equivalent to the word main. This is what I suggested, Paul. The main activity at Needham Farmer's Market shall be the sale of fresh and local produce and other main food or.
Because I don't know, because I still don't know what that is. We just talked about the possibility that you had three arts and crafts and two food vendors. You no longer have the main, you certainly no longer have the main.
You're looking at this issue from the quantitative.
Because Jeff, that's where we are. That's where this planning board is and you want a special permit that we're going to sign while Marty is still on the board.
I understand.
Okay, so meet us, meet us where we are, Jeff.
Let me ask.
That's what I'm suggesting.
I want to ask.
Think.
I want to, if I could.
Let's let Lisa chime in here. Thank you.
I was going to say, if you don't mind, I was going to ask Lisa, who's in charge of our vendors, very familiar with our operation. And she's been a vendor for many years and now on the board of directors. What is your opinion, Lisa?
We can take either Jean, your suggestion of three, and if you want to caveat it, so we make sure we have, and in no case um, should we have more than some proportion of, um, artists to food vendors to make sure we don't go to only the three artists and no food vendors, although of course I think everyone understands not our intention, not our desire. And, um, we wouldn't have, be a farmer's market if we had no farmers and no, uh, food vendors. But I think we can live with whatever, uh, you're comfortable with, whether it's a seventy-five percent um, food or, 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 um, up to three vendors selling, um, uh, you know, handmade arts, crafts, however you want to word that. Um, I think we're open, we can deal with it. We're very excited and appreciate the opportunity to move to Greensfield for the year and want to make this work. And we've realized it's late for us, it's late for you.
Fine, make it seventy-five percent instead of eighty percent. Move, move on. How about seventy percent? What about seventy percent?
I would, yeah, I'd be comfortable with two thirds.
Thank you.
Two thirds.
And no more than three. Plus musicians.
We asked Lisa, Lisa, make it seventy-five percent.
Yeah.
Make it seventy-five percent.
Well, thank you. We, we can, we can deal with that.
Lee, do you have enough clarity now to be able to revise the draft and we can all get out to Marty's place and sign it?
Okay, so I think we're, we're, we're going to do seventy-five percent. And, um, I'm going to take the food truck piece off this, this section. I'm going to say food trucks for the sale of meat products and eggs. That's what you want, Jeff? Because I, I used the term food truck, which is pretty broad and that was not my intent.
I think Lisa, we were referring to meat and eggs, right?
Meat, meat and eggs. Okay, I'll, fine. I will make the change.
Limiting it to meat and eggs, right, right, rather than something more general like.
Like fish.
Food to retail.
Fish is not going to be in a truck. Fish is actually going to be, uh, they bring, they have freezers that they will bring on.
Okay.
Okay, let's move forward.
Okay, I will, I will revise it as I just described.
Thank you.
So Lee, you were saying that we need to amend the decision?
Yeah, you need to vote to basically amend, amend the decision to do what you've just instructed me to do, which is to change the condition, um, under section three point five to reflect the seventy-five percent rule and to clarify that the food trucks are really only for the sale of meat and eggs.
So moved.
I have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Jean McKnight.
I.
Adam Block.
Hi.
Natasha Espada.
Hi.
Marty Jacobs. And I vote I, five to nothing.
Mr. Chair, I move for a five minute German.
You have it.
Can I just say thank you?
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Problem with our taking these bathroom breaks is that we're greatly influencing the water pressure in the town of Needham.
Fortunately, less people at this hour have a demand on our water. Thank you for indulging me.
You're welcome. Well, we do have some things that are going to take time.
Hopefully the, uh, you know, the question with the brewery, we can walk through fairly quickly.
Paul, are you setting a limit as to when we stop the meeting or? What's the strategy?
Yeah, ten fifty.
I just wrote down eleven fifteen.
My deadline.
Lee, before we officially get started again, I have a quick question. We, we have a finance committee meeting tomorrow night.
That's correct.
You know what time we're on the agenda?
I don't know. I haven't looked at, I'll, I'll get, I'll, I'll look at their agenda and get it to you in the morning.
I'm sure it's online. And we're discussing the zoning articles that are going to be on, on the warrant. That's the purpose of this meeting.
The zoning article and they want to hear about the small repair grant program. Uh, so I've invited Karen Steinberg, the housing specialist to attend with us.
Okay, because I know nothing about what that is.
Okay.
And, and the only zoning article we have is the brewery?
Right. And so, um, I think, you know, tonight we're going to finalize the language. Um, and I've done a, I've done a explanation, which I'll email out to Jean and Adam to look at, which would be in the warrant. And I'll, if we can finalize that. And I'll, if we can finalize that, you know, tonight, and I, then I'll email the, the final article to the finance committee ahead of the meeting.
Adam, you going to be there tomorrow night?
Sure will, pumpkin. That's a reference, that's a colloquial reference to Punky Brewster from my childhood in the eighties, I apologize.
Maybe up in Canada. So.
That's possible.
Are you willing, you willing to carry the ball on the discussion of the brewery?
May I, am I prepared to carry the beer? Yes. So do you want, do you want me to explain where we're at with the definition? And with the zoning bylaw?
You talking about tonight or tomorrow?
No, tonight. That's next on our agenda.
Alex, are you there? So we're still waiting for Alex to come back.
No, no, I'm here, I just wasn't
Then we are, we are out of recess. And we're back. For those of you who are attendees who are listening to us and are still following what we're doing, we're back officially. So the next item on our agenda is a vote and recommendation on the brew pub and micro brewery zoning amendment. So where are we?
So, Lee, correct me if I'm wrong, and Jean, you may too. We're effectively looking to adjust three, three areas of this bylaw. One is a function of definition, which I'll speak to in a moment. Another is a further restriction on geography. And three is a question of the tasting room. And to go in that order, under our current definition of brew pub, we speak to malt beverages. And then we say including beer, ales, and hard ciders. A malt beverage can be a beer and an ale, but a hard cider is not a malt beverage, and that's not what's really being contemplated by, you know, by the, by a brew pub. And we can seek to expand that at a later date. But we've always really contemplated this as a micro brewery for, you know, for beer or malt beverages. So my point
You just want to remove the words "and" hard ciders?
I want to remove the word "hard cider" in brew pub. And it could just read his accessory business is the production of malt be- malt beverages, and leave it at that. Although I'm fine to, I'm fine to say including beer and ales, or such as beer and ales. And then, under the definition of micro brewery, we talk about, we talk about packaging of malt wine and hard cider beverages. And I'm proposing to remove both wine and hard cider and stick to malt beverages. And to keep that consistent really with, you know, with brew pub. So I would say, I guess, in brew pub, it would be malt beverages. And it would be the same in micro brewery. Are those changes clear?
So you're basi- you're basically following the red line?
Yes, so far, correct.
Okay. Okay.
Now, oh, yes, go ahead, Jean.
Oh, I wondered if you wanted me to speak to the changes in geography. Or if you want to, that's just my
So all, so I'll, I'll start on that, and then, and then please help me. I think after considered deliberation from our public hearing that the characteristics of the area effectively around Riverside Street and Highland Terrace, which, which has a small section of SRB, a tiny section of SRB, but is also fortified by the New England Business Center District and Highland Commercial one-twenty-eight, that in the interest of protecting that unique enclave that we would allow, we would allow the use but specifically west of Second Avenue. So it can be north or south. It can be north of Highland Avenue, you know, all the way to the border of Newton. And it can be south of Highland Avenue, but provided that if it is south of Highland Avenue, it's west of Second Avenue. That was one, that was one change. And then the second change for the geography was closer to the center of town at Chestnut Street, where it would be permitted west of Chestnut and south of Keith Place. I think that's correct. Is that right?
Yes.
And the reason so I, I think that, I think that's really what we were effectively, you know, talking about, and that was generally to, to really protect, again, the, you know, the area really of Lincoln Street.
Of Lincoln Street. It also protects, actually, the Chestnut Street Business District continues down across Highland Avenue to Garden Street. So it also protects the residential area that's across Garden Street from from the Chestnut Street Business District.
And then there had, you know, I, there had been some, I've certainly had a conversation, I think others may have as well, with, with a resident who owns an industrial property on Crescent Street in the Heights, and wish that we could expand the definition, or that we could expand the geography of the allowed uses to effectively include that section of, you know, Crescent Street. But I think because of the limitations of our procedure, we cannot at this point expand it. So in the future, after this town meeting, you know, if a citizen petition came to, or the board otherwise on its own endorsed an expansion of the geography and the districts, then that would be up to a future, a future vote, but I understand his concerns. And yet, and yet I do believe that the characteristics of the section around the hospital, Lincoln Street, and perhaps Garden, and certainly that other enclave are very unique in town. So I think that that's a morally defensible position. I think it's a reasonable position of our board, and that speaks to the geographical change. The final change is, I would propose that we strike under the micro brewery definition any reference to a tasting room. And the reason is because in, in micro breweries, if you can indulge me for a second, if you can imagine, let's say, a ten thousand square foot unit, let's say something about the size of, I think Trader Joe's, I think Trader Joe's is somewhere around ten thousand square feet, or Frank Webb, the site on Highland Avenue, that building, not the location, but the building is roughly ten thousand square feet. If you walk in from the front door, you might, you know, you might see at the very back, about three-quarters of the way to the rear, you'd see these large stainless steel drums where the fermentation process occurs. So you kind of get to see a little of how the sausage is made. And, and, you know, right in front of you, there, you know, there might be food service, kitchen, that type of thing. And perhaps on the, on the left side of the kitchen, you know, there might be an opportunity, there might be a bunch of coolers where you can come in, pick up the canned product or bottled product, pay for it, and walk out. And if you wanted to stay on the premises and have a pizza, or have a sandwich, or burger, and, and have a beer that's being brewed at that facility, as it stands now, for instance, if you're at Blue, or the James, or Cook, or other places in town that sell beer on draft, you can actually taste the beer anywhere in those seats. So it seems to me that on the same basis, we don't really need, for the purposes of the micro brewery definition, to include the tasting room, because you can taste and sample, which is the intent of these words, you can sample that product, you know, anywhere where you're sitting. That's certainly the case now with those other establishments I referred to. So I think by including a tasting room, we might complicate things, which I would prefer not to. I think it's more clear if we're not referencing a tasting room. Because the purpose of including the tasting room was just the concept of being able to sample the product. But again, you can go now to the James, whether you're sitting inside or outside, and you can ask to try, you know, one of the beers, and, you know, they'll give you a pour, you know, you know, somewhere around that size. This is water, not beer, by the way.
I, I'm also going to mention that one of the things that I've enjoyed, actually, my wife and I have both enjoyed at various brew pubs that we've been to, because I think they do this at John Harvard in Framingham, and I know they do it up at the at the Barrington Brewery, where we go when we're, when we're in the Berkshires. You can buy, instead of buying a beer, you buy a, I forget what they call it, but it's basically
Flight?
Yes, no, 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 it's a, it's a a wooden slab with small indentations where they put small, usually it's like five, five samples.
Yes, called a flight.
Yes. And that's great. I love being able to do that. You get a flight of, you know, five, five samples of five different beers. And it probably, I don't even think it's a full glass.
No.
But, but it's and you're sitting at your table. And you get that, and that's, you're basically sampling.
Yeah.
So I understand the concept of a sampling room, but we're not precluding a sampling room.
Right, I mean, they, exactly, by, by removing the tasting room, we're not excluding it.
Yeah.
I agree. So those are the changes that I propose. And then I think and there was some final discussion about whether we would include the word "not" under micro brewery at the last sentence. The facility may include as an accessory use, an eat-in, or take-a-restaurant, including outdoor dining, which may or may not, was the question, may or may not occupy more than half the area of the facility. And I think we resolved to not include the word "not." So, need to read as is.
If, if I, if I might add regarding the discussion of including, I mean, excluding certain strips of commercial areas that are adjacent to residential. And recalling the comments made by Mr. Wolfson at our hearing, he was suggesting, as Adam pointed out, that we should have included the industrial district that small industrial district near West Street. And we, we said, I think at the hearing, we responded that that district is very much surrounded by residential areas, and we didn't think it was an appropriate district. Neither did we think the industrial district on Hillside Avenue was an appropriate district, for that reason being Crescent And so he made the point that
Jean, Jean, are you talking Rosemary Street?
No, I'm, I'm talking about Hillside, the Am I using the, the wrong term?
No, she's right, there's an industrial district at Rosemary and Hillside.
That's right.
Yeah, Hillside, it's
Just west of the tracks.
Yeah, so that we didn't And in fact, the only industrial district, the only, and the point I'm trying to make is the only industrial district that, in which we did allow a brew pub was off Avery Street, near, excuse me, Arbor Street. A certain distance from Arbor Street, of Highland Avenue, you know, where Four Squares is, that area. And if that is a reason that we don't want to rezone for this type of use, industrial areas that are across or near residential areas, Mr. Wolfson pointed out that Arbor Street has a great big condominium, townhouse development right next to it. And aren't we concerned about that area? And it did make me think, I wonder if we should reconsider in allowing brew pubs adjacent to Arbor Street, and I just wanted to raise that issue to be, to be consistent.
Let me comment, please, because I took a drive down Crescent Road over the weekend. And you drive down Crescent Road, which is a residential neighborhood, and then it opens up into the industrial area. And it is a large industrial area with many commercial buildings. And it's, the road extends down, and I'm looking at these buildings, and I'm thinking, this is a perfect place for a brew pub or a micro brewery. I didn't see any problem with having this, the, 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 the micro brewery or the brew pub in that area. It was a large commercial area. And I know that we can't expand what we've noticed, so we can't do it tonight. But I decided that Mr. Wolfson had a legitimate gripe that it's not allowed in an area where he happens to own, and I took another look at the bylaws when I got back. And right now, based on the conversations that we've had with Marty about section, what, what is it, Marty, one-point-three? The use of one-point-three? And the, 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 the uses that are allowed in industrial areas, which include a restaurant by special permit, and it includes manufacturing and craft, you know, right now, the industrial zone is the only zone where a person could come to us without this amendment and put in a brew pub. Because
Reject that interpretation of our bylaw when we initiated this process.
No, we were saying we didn't like it. Because actually, except for, except for the restaurant use, it was all as of right, ra- rather than by special permit. So that, that, that was, was, was a concern.
So, one, Paul, not one-point-three, three-point-one.
Three-point-one. Section, section three-point-one.
I drove that area, I drove that area too, Paul. And if you take a look at this, you know, at the strip, you know, of Crescent Street, that goes from west all the way to the end, you know, the stretch that's residential is longer than the stretch that is commercial, although there
But you're not putting a brew pub in there, that's zone single residence.
Right, but I'm just
Until you get to the end, when you have the commercial buildings.
Right, but I'm saying, you were saying that it's a, you know, that it's, it sounded like you're implying that there is that, that Crescent Street That that Crescent Street is largely a industrial area.
I'm saying that the section of Crescent Street that is industrial.
Yes.
Looked to me like a great place to put a microbrewery or a brew pub. It wasn't like, and in fact, it's much better than up at Arbor Road. Or Three Squares, because all we're doing up there is allowing them to use the building that is currently Three Squares to put in a brew pub. Which actually is probably too small anyway.
Well.
That area, I drove around that area. And there's like, you know, it's, it's all little roads that are, you know, you can't even, that are barely passable.
So it's it's what Louis's suggestion is legitimate and valid. I recognize it, and I understand that it's valid. That one of the unique elements to to the to Three Squares is that it's already been an area that serves alcohol. And in fact, has had.
Building.
Yeah, I I I I understand that, and your presumption. That that facility may be too small for a brew pub is not necessarily accurate, however.
My point is singling that out was inappropriate.
I I I understand that, I think we learned through this process. That there, which is part of the exercise. But that was, I think, an oversight. And yet, and so to correct that. Do we remove it from all industrial districts? Or do we keep it for what it is and in time? You know, the future planning board or a citizen's petition can seek to expand the geography.
Well, I I respond to your question by saying, I think we should. Remove, and we should change under industrial. Brew pub to in, so that no brew pub presently. With this zoning amendment would be allowed in these small, in these industrial districts. Yes, and I think I'm agreeing, it seems like Paul is agreeing with that.
Well, let me tell you what I'm gonna do then, I wasn't planning to say this until later. I am going to approve the amendments to this zoning by law. I will vote to approve the amendments. I think this is the best we can do tonight. But when we get to the vote of whether or not the planning board. Supports it. I'm gonna vote no.
Supports what?
Supports. The recommendation to town meeting, that it be approved. I'm gonna vote no. Because I was against this before, and I'm against it now. Because I see this as a solution in in search of a problem. We do not, not wait, Adam, stop shaking your head at me. Okay, and I'm gonna put this on the record, we're being recorded. What happened between you and Rick Mann tonight was inexcusable. And it shouldn't happen again. You blew up at him in a way that was not. Appropriate for a member of this board. And I ask you to consider that. And don't shake your head at me. Thank you. I think that this was brought to us. In a rush. We've had, what, six or eight weeks since we had our meeting? A joint meeting with the select board. And I suggested then that this was something that could be brought to town meeting in the fall. We have rushed to put this together. We have not really considered it the way we've considered, how many years did we take before we presented Muzzy to the town? We consider things in a timely fashion. This has not been considered in a timely fashion, and it's not like we even have somebody like we have with with. Carbon Health. Where we have somebody who wants to come in and we're considering the issue for a real life person. Who wants to consider this? We have amendments to our zoning bylaws that I think need to be made. Because we've had issues, I think this whole thing with Carbon Health. Has raised a considerable problem in my mind. That 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 we have this exclusion of medical clinics. And we have this exclusion or 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 this separation. Between a medical office with two doctors versus a medical offices with three or more doctors. And I understand the reason that was put in there, and I don't think it was a good reason. The reason that was told to me was that we wanted to protect one of the businesses that was in town, namely the hospital. That's not, that's not the function of a planning board. We're not here to protect a particular business. And there were these kinds of amendments to our bylaws that we should be presenting to town meeting to correct mistakes. And not to rush to to put something in where we don't even have, we. This could be like lower Chestnut Street where we put, where we put in a a a an amendment. Because we want to see something, for some reason, we want to see something happen and we go 10 or 15 years and it never happens. And what have we done? We've we've we've. Wasted our political capital at town meeting. Because God knows that we have a problem at town meeting. Every time we have a bylaw. And so I don't think we should be presenting this now. I have no problem presenting it at a later date. When we've had more time to really decide what it is that we want to do. Including whether or not there are areas in town that we want to include that we're excluding. Or whether there are areas in town that we're including that we want to exclude. Instead of deciding at the last minute that we're excluding Chestnut Street below Keith Place. I'm sorry, we're including Chestnut Street below Keith Place, but excluding a certain area above. You know, this is, this is something that we should take time to do and do it right. And so I'm gonna vote no on the recommendation to town meeting, and I have a feeling that you're gonna go to town meeting. And. I'm not gonna present it because I'm voting no, Adam will present it and he'll decide whether he'll actually say that the vote was four to one, or he'll just say that the planning board recommends approval. But the vote's gonna be at least four to one. I've had my say, thank you.
Mr. Chair, will you recognize me to speak?
Yes, please.
I want to thank Adam for bringing this before us. I think it has been well thought through. And I don't think it's unusual after a hearing for us to. Make some changes in a zoning bylaw that we're putting before town meeting. And I've I've helped to work out these, the wording of these changes to make sure they're clear. And also a concern for protecting residential neighborhoods. One of my motivations and one of the reasons I welcomed this. Is, you know, I happened to be at my daughter's in Fairport, New York, which is a suburb of Rochester, New York. And she was just so excited about the impact. That I'll call them brew pubs and microbreweries, I don't know if they use that word, but we drove around and looked at them. The the energy that that brought to their small suburban downtown. Which I had more old factory buildings than we do, it's still, you know, it's right on Erie Canal and it did have. Those factory buildings that were so great for conversion, we don't have that. But still, you know, it I really was excited about this idea, and coincidentally, it was brought forth and I've worked on it. And I don't think it's been rushed unduly. But I I I just want to thank Adam for bringing it forward, also, remember at the hearing. There was a young man who said he's very excited about bringing forth a brew pub in our town, it's not as if.
And I heard that, and I've been clear, I love brew pubs, I'd love to have a brew pub in Needham. I'm objecting to the process that we've gone through, because somebody in this town. Somebody, not somebody in this town, somebody in a position of authority in this town, besides Adam. Decided that this should be done right away. Because somebody came to us and said, I want to put in a brew pub, was told by Dave Roach that he couldn't do it, when actually I still think it could have been done on Crescent Road. Or some, you know, could could have found some someplace where whereby section 3.1. It could be allowed, probably, probably also in the mixed juice 128 area. And but that's beside the point, but somebody got. That person came to us, was told he couldn't do it, and then we never heard from him again. He didn't come back and say, you know, well, what can I do? Okay, so we don't have anybody in front of us. Who was rushing to do this, but for some reason, somebody in this town decided that it had to be brought before this town meeting. And again. We have a problem in front of town meeting. And I don't know where this is gonna go in front of town meeting, but I bet it's gonna be discussed for a long time, just like we discuss. All of our zoning bylaws at town meeting, because people make motions to amend on the floor of town meeting. Excuse me, I'm starting to lose my voice. And I'm objecting to the process, I think this is something that should be brought. In the fall or at next year's town meeting after we have. Vetted it a lot more closely. I'd love to have a brew pub in town, I'm not objecting to that. I'm just expressing my opinion about the process and I'm gonna vote on my conviction on that, and I know that I'm gonna be outvoted and I'm fine with that. Happens to me a lot in my life. Usually with my wife and daughter, but that's a different story.
Should we finalize our wording and I'm I'm, I don't mean to take this slow, but sorry.
All right, can I just briefly respond to this and then I would love to finalize the wording here? I think you're both right, actually, I do think it's been rushed. I don't think we've studied this the way we've studied a lot of things. But at the same time, it's a much less complicated bylaw than a lot of things that we propose. I think there is. I think there is a movement in town towards a brew pub. And I know that there was a survey taken not long ago where a lot of people expressed. A desire to have a brew pub or a pub. So and even if we would go to town meeting. Not won't be me, but even if the planning board were to take this to town to town meeting and it got turned down because it needs work. So what? And I'm not sure it would be turned down.
I don't think it will be.
Well, you know, you you might be turned down, might not be, but I don't think it matters, frankly, if it if it's turned down. So I would like to proceed to finalize the language and frankly, Adam's. Proposed changes as he laid out are all fine with me.
They're fine with me, I wish we could include Crescent Road, but we can't, we can't.
So I don't have any problem with any of that, the only thing I would propose. Is just editing in the section six of the bylaw. Where I find something to be confusing. Where it says, this is used as permitted by special permit. By adding a new paragraph Q that states, quote, microbrewery allowable only in the portion. Of the Highland Commercial 128 District located. I would put in a little A before the north, and so have it read north of Highland Ave. And little B, south of Highland Ave and west of Second Ave. Because the way it reads right now is confusing.
I agree.
So. That's the only change I would made in addition to what Adam suggested.
Would you make the same change in number six?
That it is what I'm talking about.
Oh, then would you make the same change in number five? Western, south.
I don't think you need to do it there.
Okay, all right.
I want to also say that I appreciate what Paul is saying that we're that we're rushing in a little bit, but I appreciate what all that work that Adam has done also, because I think it's timely. And I think normally, we probably would take more time, but I think this, there's, there's, there's a. A need for, not a need, but an interest in this and town and and it's something that we don't have and I, so. I I appreciate what you've done, Adam, but. And again, I I agree with Marty, I mean. Hopefully it'll pass, if it doesn't pass, then we can tailor it even more, but. I think it's definitely worth doing.
Yeah, and by the way, I would only add that I do agree with Paul that Crescent Road ought to be looked at very carefully to be included here. I I agree with that.
Are we, just on wording. Are we deleting the sentence, a tasting room devoted, et cetera, not to exceed 25 persons?
Yes, me, all right with me.
Yes, we delete that, okay. Are we comfortable leaving that small area off Arbor Street? Or should that be just in in industrial?
I think I think Paul's to Paul's point, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think that Paul's point, we we are kind of singling out one district. I don't, I. I understand. Paul's point and I understand Lou's position. And. And I'm and I'm okay to include to exclude that, so I would support that change and we can always perfect this a little later.
So we can just change that to in and delete that footnote. All right.
Like to apologize if I may, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Adam. Apology accepted.
Then, one more thing I just noticed, and and this is just a typo kind of thing. On right under. Under number four. When you get into the chart and it lists the districts. There's a typo in the third and fourth categories. GR should simply be GR, the third category. But under GR, it says and three.
Yeah, what's that?
That should be moved over to the fourth column where it says A, one, two, and three.
Right.
This is a typo.
Yep.
Right.
Thanks, Jean.
So shall we, what do we need to vote that we're making these changes?
Yes, we need to vote these. These amendments to the. To the bylaw.
I move that we approve the amendments we discussed tonight that are shown in red line on the draft. Presented to us with the further changes discussed. And that that is what we. Have go have have on the warrant.
Second, second.
Yep, so it's been moved by Jean and Marty got in there fast in his last regular meeting. So I accept Marty's second, any further discussion? Yes, Adam.
I just want to clarify a comment in case people are listening, I. I have no hidden agenda here with, you know, trying to set up a brew pub, I have no financial interest and. And don't intend to have a financial interest in a, you know, in a brew pub here. You know, this had come about in, you know, it was responsive through our Council of Economic Advisers. And was timely on that basis, I apologize for shaking my head, I. And I and I and I apologize that you feel as though it was rushed, but oh, but I appreciate. I appreciate your comments, and again, I apologize if I lack civility among my colleague.
Thank you. By the way, I may very well vote for it on the floor. By the way, I may very well vote for it on the floor of town meeting. I'm just making a statement tonight about the process in my vote. Not recommending it to town. Alright, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Let's take the roll, Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
And I vote aye because I'm accepting the the amendments, so it's five to nothing to accept the amendments to the proposed zoning by law.
So now do we need a motion to to move this?
We need a motion to. To recommend passage of this bylaw as amended by town meeting.
They'll move by the planning board.
Well, that's who we are, yes. Recommendation by the planning board to. That 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 town meeting approve this amendment, approve this by law amendment, yes.
Second.
Any further discussion? Take the roll, Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
The chair votes no, so it's four to one. Recommended that town meeting approve. Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the next agenda item and it's already eleven thirty. So let's see if we can move quickly now. And in order to move quickly, I need to. Find my agenda. Here we go, I put it under my zoning. So the next item on the agenda. Is, oh, Residence B. Is this going to be a quick discussion, Lee? We have not heard from, we have not heard from George Shunta.
This is, this is our position on whether or not we want to proceed with the article or not. Or 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 whether or whether or not we want to do a study of this particular neighborhood.
And and we have a responsibility as voted by town meeting to consider this and report back. Actually, the town meeting vote said that we should report back now, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Well. Alright, I'll stop there, but I do have something to say about it.
Please do, Jean. Because my reaction was what we haven't heard from George Shunta, so. You know, we haven't had an opportunity to study it because we haven't been asked by the petitioner.
Well. I think we have an independent responsibility to study it. And I think the issue that came up at town meeting. Was that the proponent. Was not being forthright in the, I guess, the written materials that the proponent put out. About the potential that this change could mean. For consolidation of lots throughout the entire area to be rezoned. That could result in a large number of new lots that would be buildable. When the. When we had had a meeting with the developer. He was forthright about that. We did talk about that. But town meeting had a different impression. And that was, that was seemed to be the main issue. So I think that if to study this. We need, we need. And it's not that hard, but we need some staff help, whether it's the building inspector, town engineer's office. I think that the study should come from us. On what the potential is for the total number of lots that could be created. Also, I think we should be acknowledged that it's very unlikely. That there'll be a wholesale buying up of all these houses and re re. Restructuring of them through the A and R process. And of course, the original proponent had extra land and he could immediately. You know, divide his land. But it's very unlikely, but still, tell me you should know exactly what the potential is. And that we should make that our report. Because that was the issue.
May I raise another issue on this? Shouldn't we be? Going back to George Shunt Jr. And asking. Mentioning that we haven't heard from him or his client. Or his clients, actually. And do they, do they intend to go forward? Because it's possible. That. Reason we haven't heard from them is because they've given up on it. And that can be our report to town meeting. The petitioner is withdrawing his. His citizens petition.
Another possibility is that this particular change could be and perhaps there are other areas in town. Where there are little pockets of 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 small lots that happen to be zoned in a single residence A. That could be rezoned for a single residence B. And perhaps the housing plan study group should study it.
Yeah, I mean, we we actually did have one. I mean, it was only. It created two lots, but across or across Dwight Street from the Dwight School. From the Charles River Center. If you remember, that was. That was.
Do that, that's right. We we yeah, there were beautiful historic houses. And a start preservation was granted with regard to one of the houses that helped us to support the rezoning.
Yes, Mark, Adam.
I have a couple of questions. When I'm reading through the the borders. In our agenda at Articles and Item Six in our agenda. It talks about Kendrick hunting the highway in Cheney. But if I recall correctly. We're really referring from between hunting and the highway. From Cheney up to Jane or one seventy six. Hunting Road, correct? It's not just one, it's not the. Non-square, it almost looks like a kite. It's the, it's that. Odd rectangular strip. And across Kendrick down to Cheney, is that correct? So. Remind me what happened at town meeting. We 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 supported a zoning change from SRA to SRB. Town meeting instead referred it to us. To report back.
Something it wasn't clear because I. In our materials was were the minutes from town meeting and it wasn't clear to me whether it was being referred to us. Or to the select board. Or to all or. Or to the finance committee or to all three of us.
Let's see the vote.
I thought it was referred to us, but.
Well, yeah, we we kind of, but but the vote wasn't.
It just says the motion.
Motion to refer it back to the town boards, basically.
It said the motion to refer was presented, but the moderator was in doubt. As the voice vote, the motion was again presented and carried. A motion to move the, a motion.
Well, Michael Grace. Moved to refer the subject matter of the main motion under Article Seven to the planning board. Yeah, you're right, Paul, select board and finance committee for the study and report back to town meeting. So then. When the action was taken, I think it was harkening back to Michael Bryce's motion. When it said the motion to refer, that's the motion that the moderator was referring to. The motion was again presented and carried by voice vote. You see that where it says Michael Grace precinct J?
Well, you're page ninety three of the minutes or ninety?
Ninety four.
Oh, yes, I would advise. Grace moved for further subject, but that's right, I see that. I mean, so clearly this, you know, we haven't had a chair, vice chair among any of those other bodies. We haven't really studied it.
Yeah, that's a first step, yeah.
And I, but I I will say this. There clearly is a move in town to enable more affordable housing. And moving the and and changing these lots from SRA to SRB. Will allow by its very nature, greater density.
Well, not, you know, not. Not enormously graded because the lots were developed at a smaller size.
Anyways, yeah.
You know, it's probably non-conforming situations. So it needs some study on what that really will mean, but.
Now, it's a slight slider, a slight higher density than it is, so.
Well, I think that's right.
Adam, but your point is on the. Boundary that we're talking about because I'm looking at the zoning map. And the area that's bounded by Kendrick, Hunting, Cheney and the circumvental highway is a very small area and I thought. I thought we were talking about that entire side of Hunting Road.
The part that's all green space and park. They left that in the SRA that wasn't proposed. On the, so I guess it's a some side of Cheney, that's all. Open space.
No, no, I'm talking about, I'm talking about. The north, the northwest side of Kendrick. From Kendrick to. If you've got the zoning map. From Kendrick towards towards Highland Avenue. Along Hunting Road. Position included all 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 of those lots also to to make them single residence B.
Right, that's right.
Aren't they already in single are not, aren't they already in single residence?
No, no, I'm looking at the zoning map, that's single residence A. Hunting Road is the dividing line. On the other side of Hunting Road, it's single residence B. But, and this was probably done before the circum. For Route one twenty eight was put in, and I insist on calling it one twenty eight, not ninety five.
Well, SRA snakes. Over. Past Cutler Lake. And then nor the Lee between the, you know, the the big business district and. Hunting Road. It's just those houses there off. Off Kendrick Street. That's all that's in SRA.
No, all those. I'm looking at. A dark. Dash line.
Right.
That runs from the cloverleaf. Cloverleaf. And goes. Up along, that must, that's, yeah, that's Highland Avenue. Highland Avenue to the river. And then along the law, along the river all the way down to the MBTA tracks. And then it cuts. Across the MBTA tracks, across the highway. To Hunting Road, well, it's Greendale there. Greendale goes all the way up Greendale. And go and then it becomes Hunting Road past Kendrick. So you've got all those lots be between Hunting Road and the highway. And I don't know if there are actually houses on them because some of them are really terribly small. Because they were probably, they were probably there before. Before the Commonwealth took the land and built the highway.
I see, I see an area of small lots that is in the SRA zone. That is opposite Meadows Meadow Road. Between at the intersection of Greendale Avenue and Meadow Road. On the highway side of Greendale Avenue. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, it is about ten lots. Is that what you're talking about?
No, 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 I'm talking about between Kendrick and. And the cloverleaf.
But that's all part of the high of the highway interchange. It's it's just that little strip, that little.
Those all house lots because I'm seeing little lines dividing.
Yeah, there's about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Thirty, forty, fifty, about twenty, I think it's twenty three lots is what that was presented. There's twenty three lots in that little strip from between Cheney. And where that dotted line you mentioned. Crosses over into the one twenty eight interchange.
Correct.
So, yeah, there's twenty three lots.
Yeah, yeah, and and that's the area that's in the citizens petition.
That's right.
But the area that's in paragraph six of our of our of our agenda tonight. Is bounded by Kendrick Street and Cheney Street. So we're only to, so. So I don't know whether Lee got that wrong in for our agenda.
Oh, you mean the way I described it in the agenda, it's it's basically the area that Jean just described. It's that long tail and then it's so big.
All the way up to the interchange.
She described it.
Did I describe it incorrectly?
But but we know what we're talking about. We're talking about the area that's in the citizens petition.
Yeah, that's all we're talking about.
So what, so what do we do now? We report back and say that we haven't. That neither of the committees have had a chance that.
I think we have a month to actually do something. Which is number one. I still think we should find out from. George Shunter Junior where they are. Two, if they if they do want to move forward. We need to get to be because of the way the motion to refer is worded. We need to at least get together on a chair, vice chair that faces at the very least with the select board.
And the finance committee.
And 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 I was about to say, and possibly the finance committee, if they've got time to do it too. So that we can at least report back to. At least report back to town meeting that we that we had that meeting.
It'd be nice, though, you know, for that meeting. To at least have done that count I talked about. I don't think it's that hard. And it just present to the select board and the finance committee that this is the maximum and do we want? You know, what are their thoughts about that?
Again, is that something that that George Jenta can? Advise?
I think it's more believable if it comes from our own professional staff.
Yeah, I agree with Jean on that.
It was really hard. I wouldn't want to put us to the trouble, but.
We have our professional staff do the work. You want to make sure that the citizens petition is still on the table.
The only issue I'm going to have there is the engineering department is understaffed right now. And they're under and they're underwater. They are just underwater.
But at least if we make, but at least if we make the request, we can. Report back to town meeting that we requested our engineering department.
Well, I don't want to throw them under the bus either. I mean, they're they're working really, really hard and. Tom has got a lot on his plate, just trying to, you know, keep the emergency balls from from hitting the ground, and so.
Put the burden on George Genta then. Tell him we want that kind of plan and then we just have it reviewed by our local staff.
I think that's a better approach.
Okay. But give him an opportunity to say it's off the table.
So we're gonna leave it that Lee's gonna get in touch with George Jenta.
Yeah, find out the status.
Okay.
Then if he says it's still on the table, I I think we should schedule. A try to schedule sometime in April. A chair, vice chair meeting. So at least we can report back to town meeting that we did that. If Adam's not elected to town meeting, he'll be the chair. So we're okay having this meeting on the twelfth? We don't have something in the rules that we can't have town meetings on election day?
No, we check with town council, we're fine. We can't have a hearing on an election day. We can have a meeting.
Okay, good. Okay, the next item on our agenda then is the request to release performance bond. May I have a motion?
Wait a minute, what, what, Lee just said we can't have a hearing on April twelfth. What, what do we?
We close the hearing.
We close the hearing.
We close it. All right, good. All right, got it. Thank you. Hutter Road, Hutter Ridge, excuse me.
Okay, so this subdivision actually is gonna, is gonna, is on the warrant for, for the, um, town meeting for street acceptance. Um, which will be something you'll be, you'll be considering at your next planning board meeting. But to move it to that point, um, the property owner has requested that the, we take a look at the subdivision. And the performance bond that we currently hold on that subdivision to just ensure that all the work was completed. Um, relative to the street construction, the drain is in the utility installations, and that it's in good shape. Um, and the engineering department has gone out, done an inspection, and there's a letter in your package tonight from the town engineer, Tom Ryder. Which basically recommends that the town move this subdivision, um, as it relates to performance bond for the subdivision. Down to a maintenance bond in the dollar amount of ten thousand dollars. So, um, I'd like to have a motion from the board to accomplish that. Um, and this, as I just mentioned, the, the street will be on for street acceptance at this town meeting. And you'll be making a recommendation on that street acceptance, I think, either at your, at your next meeting or the meeting immediately after that.
Go move.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion and a second, um, for further discussion. I'm confused about something, Lee, on the recommendation from the engineering department, because the request. The request was to keep. Was to keep the twenty-four thousand five hundred dollar bond for off-street drainage.
Yes, that's separate and independent. There's, there are two things that, that happen on a subdivision, one of which is basically. The performance bond that the town holds for the street and the utility construction.
Right.
And then the board of health.
We're gonna retain ten thousand dollars.
For that, we're gonna retain ten thousand dollars. The off-street drainage bond is a bond that the board of health asks us to retain on lots to ensure that when the houses are constructed. That there are no, that there's no ponding on the lots, or that there's no water that's being shed on adjacent property. And that's a separate, independent process from the actual street acceptance and the acceptance of the utilities.
Right.
So a street, a street could be accepted, and there could be a number of lots in that subdivision, for example, that haven't been built out yet. Or, um, which, which we would still be retaining the off-street drainage bond for.
Okay, so the motion that's, the motion that's on the floor is to release. Um, is to release the bond for roadway improvements except for ten thousand dollars.
That's correct, which is basically.
We're releasing a hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars and, and retaining a maintenance bond of ten thousand dollars. That's the motion. The drainage bond is staying in place. That's the motion on the floor. It's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Let's take the vote. Jean McKnight?
Aye.
Adam Block? Natasha Spata?
Aye.
Martin Jacobs?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, it's unanimous. Okay, we can release the bond. Next item on the agenda.
I'll take care of the minutes.
Very quickly.
Yeah, um, I just had two questions in, that I marked in yellow, one on page two. Um, um, where, uh, Ms. McKnight stated, it's about two-thirds of the way down. Stated the application was not clear. And it was typed up to say, it was said, oh, it was typed up to say, the property owner is. Solomon, but the owner's name is Copley Investments. Ms. Newman noted it is owned by the Simon family. The word, the property owner is Solomon, should that have been Simon?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that should be Simon. All right, so, um, then one more, uh, question, um, on page five. Um, second full paragraph, Mr. Newman thinks it's a good use, very last line. Um, the word mixed use was tucked in there, and it, I don't know what it, it was there for. The, the sentence is, he asked if there were special permits on these two parcels. That need to be mixed use defined to allow this use. I think the words mixed use is somehow misplaced and stuck in there, and I don't know why.
I don't have any, what, what, what is this referring to?
Um, this is referring to a general report from Planning Director. Um, upcoming meetings, housing plan, working group, chair, vice chair meeting. Uh, what would be a good use, as she talking about getting a formal license to allow them to keep the seat? Oh, it has to do with outdoor, uh, dining, Latina restaurant, and then Ms. Newman thinks it's a good use. And, uh, and then we're talking about the easement at Fifty Dedham Avenue. And the Brookline Development Company, the dumpster in back. It's all about overseating. Mr. Albert stated the letter had conditions that he wants to exist, that's in the end. He asked if there were special permits on these two parcels that need to be mixed use. Defined to allow this use.
That's not what I said.
Just take out miss, mixed use?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so with those two additional changes. Um, just somebody, or I'll move that we accept the minutes as redlined.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, take the vote, Jean McKnight?
Aye.
Adam Block?
Aye.
Natasha Spata?
Aye.
Marty Jacobs?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Hey, report from the planning director.
Uh, yes, I just want to report that Chris Heap has, um, found, um, legal consuls to represent us in the sixteen eighty-eight Central Avenue case. Um, and he's notified us that he has retained Jay Tellerman. Um, and so I think, um, we'll probably, we'll be setting up some kind of executive session. Uh, to discuss the litigation in, in the near future.
I think this is a good choice. Uh, Jake Caliban, uh, quite a few years ago, maybe fifteen, was with KP Law, and I worked with him. I think he's a good attorney, and, uh, it would, he'd be an appropriate attorney for this case.
I have to say that I Googled him, and I found that he has a very impressive resume in the municipal law side. The municipal law litigation.
Yes.
I was gonna say something else about it, but I guess not. Okay.
We have to assign people for the warrant meetings, don't we, Lee?
Oh, yes, we do.
Yeah.
I'm in precinct C, well, so is Natasha. We're both in precinct C. I usually take precinct CD, but. Natasha, if you wanted, I can sit in another room.
No, that's okay, you can take it.
To precinct C, Paul?
Yeah, they're combined, be, be, because there are five of us, and there are ten, there, there are ten districts, so I'll be CD.
Yeah, and shall I be E and F?
I'm in E, what, what's the, I apologize, what's this?
It's the warrant meetings that the, um, the, um. Has every year, uh, to go over every single thing on the warrant.
It's to be in the room so that when questions come up, well, one question that may come up is the brew pub. Uh, article, that, that's our only zoning article, but if there are other planning board issues that are on the warrant. So that they'll look, they'll, they'll look to you for the answers.
What date is this?
It is the Monday, April twenty-fifth, at seven thirty at the center at the Heights, which is, which is where they've been having it in recent years.
At seven thirty in the evening?
Yeah. Usually does for about two hours. They're pretty good at, at keeping it moving along.
If you, are you, we looking for volunteers here?
Yeah, uh, do you want to take E, I mean, E and F, since you're in E?
I'm in E.
Yeah, okay, I'll take wha- whatever people want me to take, whatever's left. Um, let's see, Art, Marty won't be on the board anymore, this is awkward, isn't it?
Yeah, so what, whatever's left, whoever is, is elected.
Yeah, huh, uh, right, whatever, whatever's left. So I'm glad, I'll take anything, what do you want me to take?
I don't, I don't care, A, B.
Yeah, I'll take A, B. Would, would you be willing to do one of these rooms, Natasha? What, what precinct do you live in?
She's in C.
D? Oh, you're in D.
No, I'm in C, which is the same as Paul.
Yeah, the same as Paul, oh, yeah.
Why don't you buy the property across the street, move across the street, then, then you'll be in D.
Paul, no comment.
So, does it matter? Do you wanna, wanna wait and see, um, who gets elected and, um?
Well, why don't we just assign that person to whatever's left, or, or do you wanna?
Yeah, that's fine too, whatever's left, so. Any preference, Natasha, you?
Doesn't matter.
Jean, are you a town meet, are you running for town meeting, Jean?
Am I running for town meeting? Yes, I am. Yeah, I've been on, I've been a member of town meeting for decades.
Okay, so what are we assigning Natasha to, so I can let the, the, the league know?
What's left?
G and H, I and K, I and J.
If they can put, if they can, can they put, um, one of those other districts in with E and F? And I'll do three and.
You're in different rooms, Adam.
No, they're in different rooms, Adam, so you have to, you have to take the combinations they offer.
Got it.
Maybe there'd be fewer people coming, and it's a possibility, but I, I think we, we may as well go along with the plan.
And what is it again? We, we show up and, and we listen to see if they have any questions, or?
What happens, what happens is they go through the entire warrant, um, and then you're available to answer questions on your article.
Hmm, so there's, there's not that much to do, because our only article this year read is the breweries article.
Right.
That's right.
Yeah, but, but it's also an opportunity for you to hear what town meeting members, what questions town meeting members have about. The various.
Right.
And basically, and basically our articles.
I mean, or do we have enough people to be assigned?
Yes, there's just five rooms.
Sure, just assign me whichever room, no one.
You're GH.
GH Natasha, and the new person will be.
Will be IJ.
I and J.
Okay, we'll let them know.
If, when you, you let them know, Lee?
Yes, we'll let them know.
Lee, I got, I got in the mail from George Jenta, something about the Learning Tree Preschool.
Yes.
So, obviously, I'm not gonna need to, you want me to put an envelope for you or Alex to pick up on my back porch and give it to the newbie?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. We're gonna have to figure out a new strategy, Marty, we've been using your back porch all this time, and it's just been this wonderful tool.
You can keep using it, it's all right. It's up to you.
No, we're not gonna, we're not gonna take advantage of you that way. We're gonna have to find another program, but it's been really nice. I like running.
The PSAB is open now, so we can just go back to showing up at the PSAB, right?
It might be harder for people who work.
Oh, yeah.
You can't go nights and weekends.
Okay, under.
We'll work it out when it's not midnight.
Under correspondence, we did get an email from, uh, Marian, Anne, Anne Marie Nichols, is that her name?
Yes.
Yeah.
Kim Marie.
Kim Marie Nichols.
Kim, Kim Marie Nichols regarding the Hunting Road citizens petition, so. I'm not gonna describe it, it's a fairly long one, and, you know, she's against it, basically. And I found in my mailbox when I got home that I was served with the, uh, with the complaint. Provided by mail, uh.
I, I also received it, they must have been in precinct C.
Yeah, well, no, it was, it was, it was. So, so some, somebody.
We received ours at the office as well.
Somebody took the green card off, even though I don't think anybody signed, signed it, and, uh, looked it in my mailbox.
I, uh, I apologize, but my blood sugar level is crashing, and I really need.
I will, I, no, I don't apologize, it is twelve oh five, and we should have a motion to adjourn.
Officially, my last real meeting in the longest in fifteen years.
I know.
Even longer than the sixteen eighty.
We only had one thing to talk about, right, one public.
Was it, yeah, so.
That we adjourn.
I'm motion, or second.
Second.
I'm gonna accept Natasha's second, because I haven't heard from her all night.
She's half asleep.
We'll take the.
Okay.
Jean McKnight?
Aye.
Adam Block?
In honor of Marty, thank you, aye.
This is you on, Alex.
Natasha?
Aye.
Marty?
Aye, aye, folks, thank you.
Aye, we're adjourned. Good night.
Marty, you'll be missed.
But we'll see you on Tuesday. We'll see you on Tuesday, Marty.
All right, okay, bye-bye.